Good evening and welcome to the Norman, to the City Council Norman Utilities Authority, Norman Municipal Authority, and Norman Tax Increment Finance Authority Meeting of September
passes unanimously.
And for our first, Traffic Transportation Engineer for the city of Norman, join me 23rd, 2025. Madam Clerk, will you call the roll?
Councilmember Gansberry.
at the podium. A proclamation of the mayor of the city of Norman, Oklahoma, proclaiming the month
Here.
Councilmember Peacock.
Present.
Present.
Councilmember Grant.
Here.
Councilmember Nofire.
Here.
Councilmember Hinkle.
Here.
Councilmember Blodgett.
Here.
Councilmember Johnson.
I am here.
Mayor Holman.
Here.
All right, please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our first item is Proclamations. We have two of them. The first is a proclamation of October as Pedestrian Safety Month in the city of Norman. Whereas the city of Norman, Oklahoma is committed to the safety and well-being of all its residents and visitors, and whereas proclaiming the month of October as Pedestrian Safety Month in the city of Norman, and the pedestrian safety is a fundamental concern and fostering a safe environment for pedestrians second proclamation is a proclamation proclaiming the month of September as Healthy Aging Month is essential for the vitality and health of our community. And whereas we acknowledge the tremendous value and vibrancy that walkable districts like Campus Corner and Downtown bring to our city, serving as hubs of culture, commerce, and community gathering, and reinforcing in the city of Norman. I'll entertain a motion to acknowledge receipt of the proclamations. the importance of pedestrian safety. And whereas raising awareness about pedestrian The motion on the floor is to acknowledge receipt of the proclamations. Councilmembers, safety during the month of October when daylight hours decrease is critical to ensuring you may cast your votes. the safety of pedestrians and reducing accidents and injuries. And whereas educating the public about safe pedestrian practices and encouraging responsible driver behavior is essential in preventing pedestrian accidents and fatalities. And whereas the city of Norman is dedicated to improving pedestrian infrastructure and accessibility to create a more walkable and vibrant community, and whereas the city of Norman, in partnership with EMBARK, has undertaken significant enhancements to our public transit system, including the implementation of route improvements and the opening of a state-of-the-art transit center aimed at providing safer, more efficient, and accessible transportation options to better serve transit users. Now, therefore, I, Mayor of the city of Norman, Oklahoma, do hereby proclaim the month of October as Pedestrian Safety Month in Norman, Oklahoma, and I call upon all residents, businesses, schools, community organizations, and government agencies to participate in activities and initiatives that enhance pedestrian safety, including educational programs, public awareness campaigns, and efforts to improve our pedestrian infrastructure. Passed and approved this 23rd day of September, 2025.
Thank you. As a voting member of the Transportation Committee, the Technical Committee for ACOG, as well as an ex officio member of the Bicycle Advisory Committee, I want to thank you all for this proclamation. This means a lot to the efforts of both those organizations. Thank you.
For my next proclamation, would Lynn Miller, former mayor Lynn Miller, and Catherine Leedy, please join me here at the podium? A proclamation of the mayor of the city of Norman, Oklahoma, proclaiming the month of September as Healthy Aging Month in the city of Norman. Whereas the city of Norman recognizes the importance of supporting older adults in leading vibrant, healthy, and engaged lives, and whereas September is nationally observed as Healthy Aging Month, a time to promote the positive aspects of aging and encourage individuals to take proactive steps toward physical, emotional, intellectual, and social well-being. And whereas healthy aging is supported by access to nutritious food, regular physical activity, social connection, lifelong learning, preventive healthcare, and safe inclusive environments. And whereas Norman is a member of the AARP Network of Age-Friendly States and Communities, and whereas Norman is home to a variety of resources that promote healthy aging. And whereas the city of Norman's Adult Wellness and Education Center is a state-of-the-art facility operated by Healthy Living Norman, offering a wide range of healthy aging programming for adults aged 50 and older. These include fitness classes, personal training, art workshops, healthy cooking courses, health and nutrition classes, recreational activities, music programs, book clubs, support groups, social events, educational lectures, and access to amenities such as a fitness center, indoor warm saltwater pool, walking track, pickleball courts, billiards, teaching kitchen, art studios. And whereas the Adult Wellness and Education Center embodies a six-dimensional model of wellness, emotional, spiritual, intellectual, social, physical, and occupational, providing a holistic approach to aging well in our community. Now, therefore, I, Mayor of the city of Norman, Oklahoma, do hereby proclaim the month of September, 2025, as Healthy Aging Month in the city of Norman, Oklahoma. Passed and adopt, approved this 23rd day of September, 2025.
Thank you, Mayor Holman and council members. You will notice that they brought me along as an exhibit for healthy aging. Anyway, okay. I am proud. My name is Lynn Miller. I think Stephen said that. I'm sorry, Mayor Holman said that. I serve as Chair of the Board of Healthy Living Norman. We are the managing agent for the Wellness Center. And I am very proud that our staff put together this proclamation and that it has been recognized. And I really want to thank the council, Mayor Holman, our city staff, and particularly Parks and Rec, Jason Olson. We would not have had as successful a first two years as we have had, and it's been amazing. And now I'm going to let Catherine Leidy, who is our executive director, say a few words about the center.
Mayor Holman and council members and residents, thank you for this opportunity to say a few words today, recognizing September as Healthy Aging Month, and for this proclamation, declaring it Healthy Aging Month in Norman. With this proclamation, we celebrate not only the vitality and resilience of older adults in our community, but also the shared commitment to ensuring that aging is a journey marked by dignity, wellness, and connection. Healthy aging is not just about adding years to life, it's about adding life to years. And thanks to seniors in our community and our city leadership, Norman Forward, and the many organizations in our community that serve the interests of seniors, we are making great strides. Healthy Living Norman is currently conducting our annual membership survey for those who attend the Adult Wellness and Education Center. And feedback so far is showing that the center's programs are helping older citizens stay physically active, and stay healthy, stay connected with others, and to be less isolated. I've heard from members who have lost a spouse within the last couple of years, and coming to the center has helped them stay connected and be engaged with others while they're working through their grief. It gives them a reason to get up in the morning. Members have told me that their health has improved, and I've seen it myself, and also that they feel stronger. And one testament is that, to that, is that we're constantly being asked to add harder and harder fitness classes, and I think that is a great outcome. And it's also a joy just seeing people making friends every day. If anybody had been to our Last Dance, you can really tell that people are getting to know each other better, and they're really having a good time. So this proclamation reminds us that healthy aging is a community effort. It's about creating safe, inclusive environments, promoting lifelong learning, and encouraging all residents to engage in activities that support their well-being. On behalf of Healthy Living Norman and the growing population of older adults who call the city home, thank you for your continued support.
Next is council announcements, and I will start by recognizing Councilmember Montoya.
Thank you, Mayor Holman. Well, good evening, Ward Three in Norman, Oklahoma. I have just one announcement. In various capacities, I have served this community since 2008, and I am ready to pursue other interests. Effective immediately, I am resigning as council member for Ward Three. Thank you, Ward Three.
So I'll make a few comments, and then we will go through our regular council announcements. As your mayor, I want to affirm our commitment to upholding the rights guaranteed under the First Amendment of the United States Constitution. The rights to free speech is fundamental to our democracy, and it is our responsibility to ensure that every citizen has the opportunity to express their opinions and be heard. City council meetings are a crucial platform for public discourse where residents can voice their thoughts, concerns, and ideas. We encourage participation, respectful debate, and active involvement from all members of our community, including us. While we honor the right to free speech, we must also maintain an environment that is respectful, orderly, and conducive to productive discussion. Everyone attending can reasonably expect that the meeting will proceed in an environment of mutual respect among the elected officials, presenters, and audience that is free from disruptions. Consequently, disruptions, personal attacks, and behavior that attracts from the purpose of the meeting, including but not limited to cheers, boos, and applauding, will not be tolerated as they hinder the ability of others to exercise their rights. My goal is to ensure that every voice in this room can be heard while maintaining the integrity and decorum of our meetings. I ask for your cooperation and mutual respect as we continue to work together for the betterment of Norman. And with that, I will, I'll, Ward One, Councilmember Gansberry, to have any announcements.
I guess I grabbed the short straw tonight and didn't know it. Ward One announcements, though, for those that aren't aware, I wasn't aware till recently. Trying to give us some feel-good story rather than what we're dealing with already. If you haven't noticed, on Sundays, I have a gentleman showing up on his own, doesn't put his name out there on social media or to get any praise for it or anything like that, but over in one of our areas that can use it the most on Ward One, over in the parking lot of Lindsay, there by the Taco Bell and the Plasma Center, we have a barber that's been showing up there and giving all those kids and men and women over there free haircuts on Sundays. And this is what Norman's about. You know, not doing it for his own publicity, not doing it for a stunt or anything like that, just doing it out of the kindness of his heart and everything. Looks like now we might have a couple other barbers that are going to join up with him and maybe be able to serve more people on those days also. So if you get a chance to go over there and just thank him. I cannot even tell you what his name is because I'm still trying to find it out myself, so. But definitely go over there and, you know, join with him. And with everything going on recently, I just want to reiterate something that I said the last city council meeting for my comments and stuff like that. Everybody knows for 18 years I've worked at the health system, and I've helped a lot of people through a lot of hard times. I personally have went through those dark moments and had to get help myself to be here tonight. So when I say this, I mean it sincerely. If there's anybody listening or anybody in attendance tonight that feels like there's no hope, that feels like there's no other route, please reach out. Somebody will always be on the other end of the line to talk to you, to care for you, and to get you the help that you need. Thanks.
Thank you. Ward Four.
Yes. Buenos noches. Ward Four in city of Norman. It's Hispanic Heritage Month till October 15th, and if you're a photographer or an aspiring one that missed the opening of Perusca Chambi's Exploring Life and Death in the Andes at the Firehouse Art Center on September 17th, just know the photography exhibition runs until November 2nd. At Chambi's opening, State Representative Annie Mends, who is the first Latina to be elected to the Oklahoma House of Representatives, presented a citation of recognition highlighting the importance of Chambi's work and the valuable cultural contribution of the Peruvian community to our state. Next is an event for Old Silk Stalking residents this Thursday on 9:25 from 6:00 to 7:30 at Ruth Uptograph Park. The Old Silk Stalking Voluntary Neighborhood Association is hosting their annual neighborhood night out. There will be hot dogs, burgers, chips, drinks, ice cream, and fun activities at the park and at the Moore-Lindsay Historical Museum. This event is a great entry point into building up your neighborhood one relationship at a time. In follow-up, I want to extend a congratulations to many talented people and organizers who successfully held the following events in the last two weeks. These were community-driven efforts that took serious teamwork to accomplish, so congrats to both Porch Fest and Ink the Block party organizers, volunteers, and sponsors on another successful and well-attended event. And actually, congrats to the inaugural Ink the Block, which many artists were able to sell, works ranging from $2 to $100 to less. It seemed like everybody made their money. Also, in a bid to increase civic IQ, we have another, we had another Ward, Ward Four quarterly meeting last Saturday. Topics range from 2025 council updates and priorities, Development 101, community events, and some information on the Marnox in the park that will be happening at Legacy Park. One bit of positive news, which we will touch on in the next month's Oversight Committee, is a glimpse of the first of three months of data on the Day Labor Van, aka Opportunity Knox litter cleanup crew. As of August 31st, there have been 279 referrals to the program, 63 riders, 42 have elected to receive services, one participant has obtained permanent employment, and they removed 23.96 tons of trash from 127 program allowable locations. For the record, the Day Labor Van came from the 2023 council retreat. And I personally remember being very clear in that I wanted trained mental health professionals running that van, and for those people to have the opportunity to connect with services. I'm very glad that staff made it happen by searching for the best-fit operator, which is a better way, and that we discovered that we could fund it with opioid settlement money. And I will save my other comments for after the rest of the meeting, so thank you.
Thank you. Ward Five.
Good evening, everybody. I guess everybody's actually heard by now that the Oklahoma Turnpike Association has announced their new route for the south extension. And I just want to let all the Ward Five citizens know that don't despair, it's not insurmountable, we're still working, and if we band together, we will continue working and beat this monstrosity.
Thank you. Ward Six.
Thank you. Good evening. The only announcement I want to make tonight is just to save the date for October 18th, which is Saturday at 9:00 AM for a watershed cleanup event at Sutton Wilderness. Thank you.
Thank you. Ward Seven.
No announcements at this time. Thank you.
Thank you. Ward Eight.
All right. Trying to unmute my microphone, sorry about that. Just want to highlight a $2 million grant that the city applied for and received from OWRB. It's going to go towards the construction cost of our line maintenance facility. So huge shout-out to everybody on staff that made that happen. That's huge. Certainly appreciate it. And that's it for Ward Eight.
Thank you. I do want to add to what Councilmember Nofire had to say about the OTA announcement. There is a public meeting tomorrow at Norman North High School at the Nancy O'Brien Center at 5 o'clock. I believe there is a press conference at 4 o'clock for anybody interested in that. And so, and I share the same concerns, folks who didn't know if their home or property was going to be in the path of this new route, and those of you who are, and what you are dealing with now emotionally, and then what the path will be ahead as this whole thing gets navigated through. But I do want you to know that the city of Norman has your back, this council has your back if you are impacted by this turnpike, and we will continue working with you and keeping everybody as up-to-date as we can about what they are planning to do and what their timelines are, and what legal options are still out there to be explored as well. Also want to encourage everybody on Thursday at 4:00 PM here at City Hall and livestreamed on YouTube, the Community Planning and Transportation Committee at 4:00 PM. If you're interested in our public transit system and what's going on there, and any road construction or infrastructure projects that you've been wondering about, that is the committee where we discuss those things every month. You're welcome to attend, you're welcome to watch online live or the replay. And if you have any questions or comments about those issues of transportation, please reach out to me or your council member, and we'll make sure those are addressed. And with that, we will move to the consent docket. This item is placed on the agenda so that the city council, by unanimous consent, can designate these, those routine agenda items that they wish to be approved or acknowledged by one motion. If any item proposed does not meet with approval, approval of all council members, that item will be heard in regular order. Staff recommends that item three through item 22 be placed on the consent docket. I'll entertain a motion to place items three through 22 on the consent docket.
Motion.
Second.
The motion on the floor is to place items three through 22 on the consent docket. Councilmembers, you may cast your votes.
All votes have been cast and the motion to place items three through 22 on the consent docket passes unanimously.
I'll entertain a motion to. Docket.
Motion.
Second.
Are there any comments from council regarding any item on the consent docket? Seeing none? The motion on the floor is to approve the consent. Members, you may cast your votes.
All votes have been cast and the motion to approve the consent docket passes unanimously.
Moving on to the non-consent agenda. Item number 23, an ordinance rezoning property generally located north of West Tecumseh Road on North Flood Avenue from A2 Rural Agricultural District and I2 Heavy Industrial District to spud simple planned unit development. I'll entertain a motion to adopt or reject the ordinance on second reading, section by section.
Motion.
Second.
Is there a representative of the applicant to make a presentation?
And council, there we go. Gunner Joyce, on behalf of the applicant, and SMC is the civil engineer on this project, so Mohammed Khan is here with us as well. We can get into deep detail on the stormwater if need be, but this is a spud right here on basically the, close to the intersection of 24th Avenue.
Second.
Are there any comments from council regarding any item on the consent docket? Seeing none? The motion on the floor is to approve the consent. Members, you may cast your votes.
Very enthusiastic.
All votes have been cast, and the motion to approve the consent docket passes unanimously.
Moving on to the non-consent agenda. Item number twenty-three, an ordinance rezoning property generally located north of West Tecumseh Road on North Flood Avenue from A2 Rural Agricultural District and I2 Heavy Industrial District to spud, simple planned unit development. I'll entertain a motion to adopt or reject the ordinance on second reading, section by section.
Motion?
Second.
Is there a representative of the applicant to make a presentation?
And council, there we go. Gunner Joyce, on behalf of the applicant, and SMC is the civil engineer on this project, so Mohammed Khan is here with us as well. We can get in to deep detail on the stormwater if need be. But this is a spud right here on basically the, close to the intersection of Twenty-Fourth Avenue and Tecumseh. I know you guys are probably familiar with the commercial activity going on there. As you can see it, the recent Starbucks is just south of the site, the On-Q right there on the intersection. And I'll jump back real quick to show you the current zoning and why we're here on a rezoning. Little bit of an outdated zoning on the site. It's an A2 agricultural zoning, but right there on the frontage of Flood Avenue as we get into kind of a pretty major commercial area. So the request here, it being under five acres, it's not a PUD, it's an SPUD, essentially the same thing, other than the acreage size. So here is the site plan. It'll be a little prettier when we get to the green space, but I want to show you the actual site plan that you'll be voting on as an exhibit to the spud. It is, it is planned as one lot, but six buildings are shown. And essentially, right now, the request is a mix of uses for commercial or industrial. So right now, no tenant really expected at this time, but the plan is to get this zoned for commercial, and then that could put it on the market when we start to see some activity there, get some sales tax dollars for this area, continue to advance the commercial activity that's already in place and operational there. Like I mentioned, mixed use. The one change that is new from Planning Commission here tonight is exterior materials. So no protests. There will be a slide that shows that, so I know I'm jumping here, but no protest on the project. There was a neighbor to the east, to the rear, that was concerned about metal buildings, industrial buildings. And so we added into, after Planning Commission, an eighty percent masonry requirement. We discussed it at Planning Commission. Every PUD has an eighty percent masonry requirement. They're interestingly enough, sorry for going quick there, there is not a corresponding spud eighty percent requirement. So if this was a PUD, it would have eighty percent. Since we don't have five acres, we have a spud, we had to draft it in. So that is now drafted in, it's in your packet. Planning Commission unanimously recommended approval of the project with that recommendation that we put eighty percent requirement. It was a friendly floor amendment at Planning Commission, so that is what's in front of you tonight. Again, unanimously approved by Planning Commission. Two items, one is the zoning, the second is a preliminary plat. As I mentioned, there is only one platted lot, so the whole development, all the buildings, just on one lot there. Staff recommends approval of the preliminary plat. We had discussion at Planning Commission about height requirements. The actual spud document does not have a maximum height. That is very similar to all of your base commercial and industrial zonings. They asked at Planning Commission what could go there with the proximity of the airport. So I just want to show you that we would have to go get FAA approval and run an obstruction evaluation study when we get a building permit. So while the spud says no heights requirement, it is governed both by state and federal levels that we would have to go through for building permits. It is a substantially green proposal. The reason for that is it does have WQPZ, Water Quality Protection Zone, through the site. So we are respecting that WQPZ, and that essentially is what you see in the middle there with two bio-retention ponds. The goal there is that area would filter out any trash and debris before it moves down through the system. You are typically used to seeing in commercial and industrial developments, something like ten percent of green space, ten percent of open space. As you can see here, what's proposed tonight is forty-three percent. So it is a very green project, green proposal, especially when you think about a commercial strip center that this essentially is proposing. So it's very green. And just to summarize, it's a mix of uses, commercial, industrial allowed in the spud. Planning Commission unanimously recommended approval with that floor amendment, and that is already in the document that is in your agenda packet. So the same item here, no amendment needed tonight. And again, we're not aware of any protests. We had the interested neighbor that kind of spurred the on-the-floor amendment. So with that, happy to take any questions that you may have. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Are there any council questions regarding this item? Seeing none. Gunner, Mr. Joyce?
Yeah, yeah.
We talked about, when I met with you, the trees around the property and specifically around the perimeter of the property, and where it neighbors other adjoining properties. Can you talk about that a little bit?
Yes, definitely. So the goal there, as you can see, along the edges, is to maintain as much of a kind of green buffer as we can. It is a pretty heavily treed site currently. If we go back, it's basically mostly trees. But this area, being commercial, I think you would expect, when, when development occurs, most of it would be clear-cut and start from scratch. The nice thing about this proposal, locking in that site plan and the bio-retention, and a very interesting element that I had never heard before that Mohammed could talk through is four bays. So it is a drainage technique that essentially allows the area, before we get to the pond, to collect all the trash and debris. And so utilizing four bays and bio-retention areas, we think we can keep it greener than what you would typically see of commercial development. There is not a, you know, mandated tree preservation language, and I think really the reason for that is achieving the WQPZ, the bio-retention, bio-retention areas. We will have to go in and do quite a bit of dirt work to get that done. But after that's all finished, the goal here is a, you know, high-class commercial development that is similar to what's in the area, and they would come in and put trees and landscaping and try to keep that landscape buffer to protect any neighbors to the north and to the east.
And trees that are in a lot of the green space that are not in the way of anything would remain potentially?
That is certainly the goal of the developer. If we get in and have to move stuff, it is possible. There's, like I said, not a preservationist area, but the goal and the intent here is to preserve what we can.
Thank you.
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay, this is an opportunity for members of the public to make comments regarding this item. Remarks should be directed to council only. Madam Clerk, are there any speakers registered for this item?
Yes, we'll start with Stephen Ellis.
Steve Ellis, Ward four. This is just going to be my regular discussion about both PUDs and SpUDs, which is to remind you that the way the statutes are written, and now the, I'm glad the city staff has started to put the, the, the actual statutory language in the reports. But SpUDs are supposed to be a kind of a special deal, right? They're supposed to be some loosening of city regulations in order to get something special, unique, something that we might want to follow on. And in a certain sense, PUD language and SpUD language is supposed to be our sort of version of, of experiments in living, to use Mills' term, right? We're trying to figure out better ways to do things. And one of the things that you almost always notice when there's a PUD or when there's a SpUD in front of the city council, is that no one talks about sort of what that deal is. It would be very, very nice if when someone was presenting about the SpUD, they would try to spell out their side of the deal. That would be something that, you know, people who were citizens of Norman could listen to for, like, why aren't we following our rules? Why do we have that rule if we're just going to bend it for people, right? So I, I think it would be useful, and I'll, I'll remind you of this probably more than once tonight, that the way the statutes are written about PUDs and SpUDs is it's supposed to be this-for-that kind of thing. And it's incredibly unclear to everybody in the audience today, sort of what the this-for-that is supposed to be. What's in it for Norman? Let me ask that that way. Thanks.
Thank you.
Cynthia Rogers?
She's waving us off.
Okay. Cheryl Ann Dento?
Is there any further comment from any of the audience about this particular item? Seeing none. Okay. Gunner, would you maybe talk about, would you talk about why your client is pursuing a spud for this instead of a rezoning? And, you know, to answer Mr. Ellis's questions?
Yeah, I think the reason that we usually go forward with a PUD and SpUD and similar to the project tonight is it does offer flexibility, both for the current owner, but also for Norman, so that when tenants come in or buyers come in, they can be a commercial user. They could be an industrial user. They could pick from that list. And typically, you know, in these areas, you will see projects come through that have unique, you know, variances requested that, that we would come back through and say, hey, this is kind of a no-brainer. We're in a commercial area. We don't want it to be, you know, industrial by the code, so let's draft a specific ordinance that ends up in a project that everyone's supportive of, that we don't have a protest. We've worked through that process with the surrounding property owners. And then we have a variety of uses that may not come directly from the code, but the city can agree that's appropriate for this area. And then additionally, for this one, this green space, this open space is something that you would not see in a commercial development, in the industrial development. So essentially, you know, that's their proposal tonight, is a little bit of flexibility, both to the city in this area so we don't continuously come back every single time, and a very substantial open space, green space, with a lot of best management practices, WQPZ, bio-retention swell, you know, type of drainage, drainage improvements that you would not technically get otherwise. So that, that essentially is this project.
And the eighty percent masonry requirement would be something where a spud or PUD gives us the ability to ask that of you, and it be in writing, and you have to do it?
That's exactly right. So if we just went with straight industrial, there would be no similar masonry requirement, and really no way to impose those conditions on a straight zoning request.
Okay. Thank you. Any final comments from council on this project? Okay. The motion on the floor is to adopt the ordinance on second reading, section by section. Council members?
All votes have been cast, and the motion to adopt the ordinance upon second reading passes unanimously.
I'll entertain a motion to adopt or reject the final reading as a whole.
So moved.
The motion on the floor is to adopt the ordinance on final reading as a whole. Council members, you may cast your votes.
All votes have been cast, and the motion to adopt the ordinance upon final reading passes unanimously.
Item twenty-four, a preliminary plat for North Flood Business Park addition, a simple planned unit development generally located one-quarter mile north of Tecumseh Road on the east side of Flood Avenue. I'll entertain a motion to approve or reject the preliminary plat.
Motion?
Second.
This is a companion item to the previous item. Are there any further council questions regarding this item? Madam Clerk, are there any further public comments regarding this item?
Stephen Ellis, Cindy Rogers, and Cheryl Ann Dento.
And any other body in the audience that would like to speak about this item? Seeing none. Okay. Are there any final comments from council? Seeing none. The motion on the floor is to approve the preliminary plat. Council members, you may cast your vote.
All votes have been cast, and the motion to approve the preliminary plat passes unanimously.
Item twenty-five, an ordinance rezoning property generally located near the northeast corner of the intersection of Classen Boulevard and Cedar Lane Road from R1 Single Family Dwelling District to PUD Planned Unit Development. I'll entertain a motion to adopt or reject the ordinance on second reading, section by section.
Motion?
Second.
Is there a representative of the applicant to make a presentation?
Let me go through this one. Here we go. All right. Thank you. Glad to be here tonight. Sean Rieger for the applicant in this case. We're in St. James Park in southeast Norman with a continuation of St. James. This is a neighborhood that's been in development for over twenty years in southeast Norman, section after section after section. And this is sort of the next big swath of it. It's been preliminary plat before, but it's coming back through now with a little bit of an adjustment or two, and I'll show you what that is in, in this area. There's the map. You see just basically raw land across the center, in between St. James on the upper right. And you see that circle in the middle is the St. James Community Clubhouse, one of the more unique ones in our community. And then to the southwest is Southlake Community, over on the left side of that development. You see Classen Avenue, Classen Boulevard, excuse me, that is really expanding now with all kinds of uses coming into that zone. Pretty remarkable that we're seeing the uses come into southeast Norman that we are now with so many different retailers and restaurateurs now coming into that area. It's pretty exciting for, for this location. And this is really why, is because the population is starting to just explode down there significantly. And rooftops, we've always said, brings commerce and all kinds of things, and that's kind of what's happening. So we're just north of the Walmart Supercenter, a lot more development happening south of that, as you're all aware, that has been coming through lately. So take you through just a series of maps, so you'll see, this is the, the subject track from city staff. You can see the yellow striped is all, is owned as R1. So it's already zoned R1. We could bring this through as just a simple straight R1 zoning, and I might just expand on some of those comments a little while ago. Another thing I would say about PUDs and the zoning code is our zoning code, as you're well aware, is a very old zoning code. That's not a criticism, it's just a fact. It is. And as we meet with staff and Ms. Hudson, and start working on projects that are more modern and more layouts, your existing zoning code, it just doesn't work. It is an antiquated zoning code in a lot of ways. And so PUDs have been for a good twenty years, the norm. Instead of communities really updating their zoning codes, they've shifted to PUDs more than anything. If you show up in Oklahoma City with anything but a PUD, you will be quickly told to come back and see us when you have a PUD, because there's a lot of extensive parameters the city can put upon you when you bring a PUD. Site plan requirements, the site plan is locked when you bring a PUD. It's not when you do open district zoning, and a lot of other parameters we talk about. So there's a lot of reasons we bring a PUD, more than what was expressed here at the podium by the audience member. This is GIS. Your GIS puts forth great maps to show us what we're working with. You see all of those lines. Those are all utilities. So this is infill development with utilities all around it, even through it, fire hydrants, water lines, sewer lines, all of it is there. And so we're really just infill developing where there is already significant public infrastructure in place to work from. There is no flood plain on this property. There is no WQPZ zone on this property. It is really quite clean. Another map, just to show you again, the zoning. You see sort of on the upper right is the existing St. James, St. James neighborhood, all R1. Then our proposed area is already zoned R1, but we're tweaking it just a little bit. I'll show you that in just a few moments. And then to the left of the site is really fairly significant, more intense uses, RM6 you see on the upper left, RO, RM6, Parkland, and then the Southlake Development is R1, but it also has a piece of it at the bottom left that is RM2. That will be important in a moment, that I'll show you that we're actually doing a part of this development next to that RM2 that will be a little more dense than an R1 product. So this is the preliminary plat that you would be voting on. And there's really two areas that we're showing you tonight. Area one, in green, is basically an extension of St. James Park. Slight changes that we're doing through the PUD, such as a ten-foot rear yard setback, and a little bit higher impervious amount, and a little bit less of a frontage, that will allow us, the backyard especially, to do ADUs, if we should so choose. You graciously passed ordinances that said R1 can have ADUs in them now, accessory dwelling units. This PUD also says they can be put here. What we're finding is that it would be helpful to have a little bit less rear yard setback for that, and a little bit more ability to put that ADU back there. So this PUD will allow for that. Area two is what we're really kind of focused on tonight, because area one will largely look like an R1 development. It basically is an R1 development. Area two, though, is using the PUD to do much smaller lots. And I'll show you in a moment how your AIM community master plan has asked us to do just that. And so area two, on the lower left in red, will be a smaller, single-family residential product and a thinner lot, basically, about thirty-five-hundred square foot lots, as opposed to R1, which is six thousand square foot lots. And so those are sort of the two areas we're proposing tonight. In total, there's three hundred and seventy-three single-family lots across this development. And again, it will be largely an extension of the St. James Park. We are asking for one floor amendment tonight. We rarely do this, but at Planning Commission, we had a suggestion at the vote. You recall, Gunner was just talking about an amendment at Planning Commission. about an amendment at Plan Commission. On the last item, we got that amendment done at Plan Commission. On this item, it was suggested as the Plan Commissioners were voting on the item, and they unanimously voted approval of this, they recommended Chairman Byrd and Commissioner Brewer kind of supported as well, said, will you do a smaller setback on the frontage of that area two, the lower-left side of the development? We said fine. They had already voted on it. We said fine. We're happy to do that. Staff has asked us to ask you to make it a floor amendment tonight to the pud. And so we're asking that you will make a friendly amendment to the pud that changes the front yard setback from 20 feet, 25 feet, to 20 feet for area development two. So when I'm done, I would ask at some point, one of you please make that motion, and then we can proceed. Let me show you AIM Norman. We're all learning this document that you approved a few months ago. A lot of incredible information in this document. It's been very helpful for us to see and use. And this development basically meets AIM Norman. You can see now, when you see on the upper right, AIM Norman has a series of maps that show what the character neighborhoods should be and the designations. This area, you can kind of see it outlined in red, falls within UL designation. Under AIM, UL is Low Urban or Residential Plan designation. And I have a quote down there on the lower right, but first, let me just tell you, this is again, 373 single-family lots. It amounts to about 3.92 lots per acre across the development. And then if you read AIM Norman for this designation, it says that they want gross densities in any single development should be greater than three units per acre. So we have met the density request of AIM Norman. And then AIM goes on to say that they want a variety and diversity of housing stock and that they want wider variety of lot sizes. That's the purpose then of area development number two in this development, where able to have a couple of different housing sizes across the development, to where St. James before was just basically the one size, R1. Now, with AIM, we can come in and we can do one part of it as a little bit of a more dense product to get a little bit more housing into this development. And you see AIM Norman on this UL designation had a couple of character photos, and I think that's pretty telling because that is basically what we're proposing. On the lower left, you see is basically St. James as a continuation of that. And the second photo is a thinner lot with a thinner home on it, and that is basically what we're proposing on area development number two. This is that area, development number two. So you recall from the larger map, lower-left area was the smaller lots. So this is the smaller lot area. Important to note, we actually had a proposal on that area, that little rectangular area, for a commercial development a little while back. Some of you may have heard about it because the neighbors were not happy about that proposal. And we quickly withdrew that. I don't think we actually filed it. It was a meeting that we had with neighbors and Mayor Holman, I think you might remember that. And they did not like it. And so we withdrew that, pulled back, and came back with this proposal for the small residential lot development. I can never speak for neighbors. I don't know, but I can tell you there is only two protests tonight of the entire area, 0.4%. And we had nobody speak against this project at Plan and Commission. So I think it's a far significant improvement from when we had proposed that area as a commercial development. So happy that it was much better received. You can see we're connecting the streets, as you see in the lower left. And I think if you would look at the very far lower left of that screenshot, you can see that the housing already there in place on Southlake does have a street of very thin lots of smaller homes. We basically are continuing that street motif all the way to the right there. So that is basically that smaller, lower-left area. Parks Plan? Parks Plan is interesting in that this will basically be a kind of a summation of what has been happening down there over many years. We met with Parks Board, of course, we have to when we do residential projects, and we met with James Briggs extensively on this project. And what you see, it looks a little complicated. It's not that complicated, but on the left side of the screen, you see a green sort of trapezoid shape. That is the parkland, public parkland dedicated to you. The remainder of that kind of key-shaped area is all zoned parkland, and it is a detention pond on the left side of it. But the green space that you see there is now going to be the totality of the park, and there is a plan or a hope that we will work with the city. The city has approached the developer and eventually connect all of it once they finish their detention pond. But I know Mr. Briggs told the Parks Board that he was excited and that now with these final pieces in place, they can start developing the park and with improvements now to put in the infrastructure for the park itself. So that will be happening, I think, in fairly short order after this. And there you see that big green space right on the left is the park. That's the park. That will be a public park for these developments, and the street will now connect to it over from St. James. So staff wrote, it's consistent with the AIM Norman Comprehensive Plan because it proposes a single-family development featuring a variety of lot sizes, connections to existing neighborhoods, and access to existing city utilities. All we're aware of is a 0.4% protest, two homeowners in the large general area of that. This was unanimous approval at Plan Commission. No protest at the Plan Commission that we were aware of that spoke against it. And with that, we are happy to answer any questions you have. The engineers are here, so they can speak much more educated-wise than I can about the details, and we thank you very much for your consideration.
Yes, I was going over your allowable uses, and I know you have accessory dwelling units in area one, which I'd love to hear. Will those be built, or does the resident have to want an ADU?
I'm sorry, I missed the middle part of the question. Will those be what?
The accessory dwelling units in area one, will they be built with the house, or is that something the resident has to elect to build themselves?
We will basically leave it to the resident to build.
Okay, so they will be allowed to. It's not like they'll be barred in the language of the spud narrative from doing it.
They would have the right to, yes.
Okay. And then also, you answered most of my questions about the protest, but I just wanted to highlight the home occupations. I'm glad you put that in there.
Thank you, Councilor.
Thank you. I'd like to make a motion to amend ordinance O2526-5 to reduce the front yard setback for development area two from 25 feet to 20 feet.
Motion to amend. Okay. Is there a second on that?
Second.
Are there any council questions regarding the amendment? Seeing none. This is an opportunity for members of the public to make comments regarding the amendment only. Remarks should be directed to council only. Is there, since there was nobody to sign up for this, is there anybody in the audience that would like to comment about the amendment on the floor for this item? Seeing none. All right. Are there any final comments from council regarding this amendment? Seeing none. The motion on the floor is to amend ordinance 0-2425-5 to reduce the front yard setback for development area two from 25 feet to 20 feet. Council members, you may cast your votes.
All votes have been cast and the motion to amend the ordinance passes unanimously.
Are there any council questions regarding this item as amended? I did, Sean. The, so, just to be clear, the Southlake addition currently only has one access point, which is off Highway 77. It can be a challenge to get out of, that's for sure. So this addition would provide a new secondary exit and entrance to the Southlake neighborhood off Cedar Lane.
Correct, Mayor. And you see it there. I don't know if that's too closed in, but that's probably the best one, yeah. Yeah, you see it right there coming south. And it doesn't show well on screen, but that, that street lines up with the curb cut for Walmart right across the street.
And it's not anticipated that that is an issue?
No, but I mean, we go through this often with city staff.
I like that it's lined up, but yeah.
Yeah, for location of curb cuts and streets, that's actually very much pressed upon us that we try to line all those up as much as we can.
And then the green space, you showed the parklands part. Do you have any visual of just the total green space that would exist in this, specifically like, yeah, there we go.
Yeah.
Where 24th Avenue right-of-way used to be.
Right.
So it will connect, but it'll, you have to go around this green space. Is that...
Correct, Mayor. And green space exhibits on R1 or single-family developments are always deceiving because it looks like there's no green. Obviously, all of those little lots will have significant green space within them. But what you're talking about, I believe, Mayor, is the green stripe coming up the middle is the 24th Avenue. And so we will not have the ability for a car, which is, I think, desirable for a car to go straight up through there. Instead, they have to route around that block. That's basically a block of homes with the green space behind them. And there's still significant utility easements running up through there, so we can't put homes over that. We keep it as a green space. I think visually, it will be nice, and then you'll see, you'll be looking up that green space as you enter off Cedar Lane, but you will not be able to drive up through there. So homes, people driving in cars will not be able to just zoom straight up through that area, which was intentionally designed to keep that from happening.
So it will connect finally to Cedar Lane, but it will be done in a way where people won't be able to easily just drag race through the middle of the neighborhood?
Exactly.
To get to Highway 9 or something. Okay.
Exactly. We don't want drag racing. They can go to Noble, Thunderbird, and drag racing. We don't want that here.
Okay, thank you. Okay, this is an opportunity for members of the public to make comments regarding this item as amended. Remarks should be directed to council only. Madam Clerk, are there any speakers registered for this item?
Yes, Mayor, we'll start with Steve Ellis.
Steve Ellis, Ward 4. So I thought that the difference between the way that Mr. Joyce and Mr. Rieger each characterized puds and spuds in the last two items was really interesting. Mr. Joyce suggested that puds help developers, and the result was at least a possible upside for the city. But Mr. Rieger, in his comments on the last, when he gave the presentation, suggested that puds had been basically replacing other forms of zoning in Oklahoma City, and that at least in the city, they're making detailed demands of people who are coming up with puds. And so I guess I have a question for the planning department about this particular pud. Does the city of Norman do likewise? Are we making detailed demands to get stuff that we want in a pud, or are we mostly just working with what the developer presents us? And if we're not making, you know, particular demands, why not? And, you know, what demands did the city make in this particular instance, or did we just get the pud application and say, all right, probably pass, so why not do this? Again, what I'm interested in is hearing the discussion about the good and bad, the trade-off that the pud and spud statutes talk about, that it be conducted in public. So at least when we're presenting it here, let's talk about what it is that got asked for, what it is that got provided, and let's see the contours of the trade that the ordinance is supposed to, or suggests is supposed to happen. Thanks.
Thank you.
Diana, excuse me, Diana Hutzel.
Good evening, Diana Hutzel, Ward 5. So tonight, I come to you as the president of the Cedar Lake Estates Homeowners Association, a small neighborhood of 19 acreage homes located directly east of St. James Park on Cedar Lane. Several neighbors and I attended the pre-development meeting for this project in July. At that meeting, we raised concerns about stormwater runoff from the proposed addition to St. James Park and the impact could have on our neighborhood. Our community lake holds about 14.5 million gallons of water under normal conditions. It's retained by a 26-foot-high, 300-foot-long earthen dam with a single 24-inch pipe outlet. Overflow from the dam drains into Dave Blue Creek, which is part of the Lake Thunderbird watershed. When Cedar Lake Estates was developed 30 years ago in 1995, Cedar Lane was a two-lane country road in a primarily agricultural area. Over the years, the surrounding land has rapidly urbanized from rural pasture land to dense multifamily housing and commercial developments. Cedar Lane is now an expansive four-lane road with bike paths and a drainage system. The surrounding fields have been replaced by a super Walmart, the 150-acre Link's Apartments, the ongoing Armstrong Bank development, and now the St. James Park expansion, along with the St. James Center Commercial Development at the southeast corner of Cedar Lane and 24th Avenue, which is a follow-on agenda item tonight. With each of these projects, stormwater runoff into our lake has increased, yet no mitigation measures have been implemented to address the cumulative impact to our neighborhood. While I recognize that the St. James plat was not modified in response to our July input, I want to formally state our concerns for the public record and urge the city to consider the long-term downstream consequences of continued development in this general area. In 2017, a routine inspection by the Oklahoma Water Resources Board revealed that increased runoff had caused significant leak and structural damage to our dam. To keep our dam classified as low hazard potential, our HOA was forced to spend more than $56,000 on repairs and upgrades to handle increased flow from the Cedar Lane and the Link's Apartment. Each of our 19 homeowners paid $3,000 at the time, which is equivalent to $4,800 today. Even after those upgrades, our system remains vulnerable during torrential rains. Runoff from Cedar Lane and the Link's and existing footprint of St. James Park frequently overwhelms our lake and dam. These surges sometimes overtop the emergency spillway on the dam's north end, placing significant structural stress on this aging HOA-maintained infrastructure. I would be remiss not to mention that the Southern Star's high-pressure natural gas pipeline runs through the entire 300 feet of our dam, further raising the stakes for maintaining the safety and stability of this structure. The proposed plat for the St. James Park addition includes four stormwater discharge points, two on Stonebridge Drive and two on Birmingham Drive, that would directly add additional runoff onto Black Lucas Place, then down to our lake. This will further increase the runoff burden on our dam and lake system. We are not opposed to thoughtful development, but we strongly urge the city to fully account for the compounding effects of runoff on small, established neighborhoods like ours, especially when critical infrastructure such as dams and gas pipelines is at stake. The city's decision to take over the privately-owned misty-like dam in Summit Lakes neighborhood sets a meaningful precedent. That project demonstrated that the city can recognize when infrastructure, even if privately maintained, poses a broader public safety concern. A similar consideration could be given to the Cedar Lake Estates Dam, which protects not only our neighborhood, but also the downstream areas, which includes upcoming development areas like Destin Landing, which lies directly in the downstream of our dam. Thank you for your time and consideration in the safety and sustainability of our existing neighborhoods and your decisions. Thank you.
Thank you.
Sherillane Dinsel.
Sherillane Dinsel at properties in Ward 4 and 6. I frequent this area a lot in my travels throughout the city, and that intersection at Cedar Lane and Classen is extremely busy. And I think further development is only going to impact the level of traffic and traffic accidents in that area. I'm a concerned person that travels that area all the time, and I think that having more dense population in that area is not going to help our traffic problems in Norman. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any final comments from council on this item? Seeing none. I have a couple. Maybe if staff would maybe speak just a little about spuds and puds. I would offer my own perspective that as a council member, I've often been able to advocate for things that constituents are asking for that are impacted by neighboring development, like a masonry wall to divide, you know, to block the lights of a parking lot, or masonry, or how the outside of a building looks that's facing your house or your business. So I've often found that spuds allowed council members to request developers to include things in a writing that our constituents may be asking for, or that we think would make the project more palatable to neighbors around it. So if you just would briefly talk about our process on spuds.
So the applicants submit their application, and staff goes through and reviews what they're proposing. We look at, a lot of times that they will say, maybe they're going to reflect R1 zoning, or they're going to reflect a different zoning. And so within that pud or spud... or SPUD document, there might be some characteristics that they're pulling from the zoning code. One specific one I can think of is one of the items that was on tonight, the Flood Business Park. I think originally, they had, did not have the requirement in there for fencing on the north side. But as it was reviewed, and, and we talked to the applicant, or to the applicant's representative and everything about their item that was before us, you know, we asked them to require the fencing instead of saying, you know, well, we might fence it, or we might, you know, have something in the covenants. There's other things, you know, I mean, you had a whole list of items. But more often, I think the applicants and the applicant's representatives are reaching out to you because it's your ward and it's your constituents that are going to be calling you and asking you what you can do to help them get, what they might need for, for their item. I mean, you can ask any of the, the representatives that we work with. I mean, we're constantly, you know, calling them, emailing back and forth of, of things that we see that they might need to, to add in there. And sometimes, you know, their, their client, that's just not, you know, in their plan. And so that's when we have to work through and figure out what we want to see to get in front of you guys.
And Mr. Mayor, along those lines, Mr. Rieger did spell out accurately the age of our current zoning ordinance, and council recognizes the RFP in circulation to provide us an update to our zoning ordinance and our sub-regulations to align with the new land use plan adopted by the city council. We do recognize that the way the zoning ordinance will be drafted in this next iteration will provide flexibility. It, we, I envision the opportunity to have more flexibility built into zoning and less need for the development community to come back for nuances. Staff is also keenly aware of council's stated goals and objectives and precedents council has set with the adoption of the accessory dwelling unit ordinance and council's ongoing conversation regarding lot size variability. Council wants more than just an 8,000-square-foot residential lot for a single-family home. We recognized in what was proposed in this particular development, smaller lots also have the potential for an impact on affordability, which we know is one of council's stated goals and objectives, to increase the availability of affordable housing. So those are all known quantities when staff is working with the development community. And I think council in Norman is probably far more active in conversations with the development community. When a piece of vacant land comes up, there are conversations, and we have initial meetings and, and pre-planning meetings, and absolutely reach out to council members whose wards are impacted to get your input directly, to make sure Norman winds up with the best possible product, the highest and best use from your perspective.
Thank you. And then, Sean, would you mind talk, or maybe addressing the issues brought up about stormwater? Concern too, when I saw this, was the known issues that have occurred in the Cedar Lake addition and the dam there, and that this development is proposing to drain into that neighborhood. He's already been having issues with that. So if you would maybe speak about that.
I will, and I'll, in just a moment, ask Anthony Hanley of Crafton Toll to come up. And this is his slide, but I want to just briefly touch on it first. We understand the neighborhood to the lower right is, is what was talked about. First, just make sure that you're aware that this development drains several different ways. And you see a green line there. It basically drains two different directions. So not all of this is draining over to that neighborhood by any stretch. It is one area of it, the lower right area only, that is draining over there. But it's important to note that we're certainly cognizant of their concerns, and city staff, I do believe, also was very cognizant of their concerns when they reviewed our stormwater master, our stormwater plans that Anthony prepared. We have to meet your code, your code as to plating. Stormwater is all about plating and how we engineer it through your code. We have to do that properly. And this does drain into that area. Any applicant has the right to continue to drain into the historic area that they drained into so long as they do it properly. And so long as they do that through proper engineering and techniques that you approve and you put forth through your engineering design criteria, we have done that. And I'm not aware of anything that suggests otherwise. So I will have Anthony come up and talk a little bit about this slide and tell you a little more about the specifics of the drainage on that lower edge. Go ahead.
Yeah. Good evening, council members. Anthony Hanley, Crafton Toll Associates. Excuse me. As you can see, as Sean said, that we've got runoff that runs to the west and to the east. We've got some to the South Lake addition, some to the Cedar Lake addition. Upon our initial design, we were aware that this could be an issue. Historically, of our site, about 21 acres drained to the east. Upon further consideration of, you know, taking stormwater that way, we reduced that by six acres. So we're taking additional six acres to, to the west. In addition to, we did an additional analysis of where our runoff would basically discharge into that, that east lake. And we showed that we were less than historic flow. And in addition to, you can see, we have four different low points. So what we're trying to do is, excuse me, is limit the amount of runoff to one point. So we broke it up into four sections to limit the amount of runoff to those existing culverts.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
And I don't know if city staff had anything further they would want to add about the Cedar Lake dam or anything like that, if you had any comments.
Good evening, Scott Sturz, Director of Public Works. This dam, we actually participated a little bit in trying to help them get that fixed. It was a serious issue. They did have some damage on it. This dam, we also, as Destin Landing was being developed, we became very worried about this becoming a high-hazard dam. It is not currently. So because of that, we made them do extra work. They did an inundation map to show that no structures would be inundated, and it would not force this dam to become a hazard dam. So as we look at, at different developments, whether coming on, whether it's going to impact an existing structure or a future structure, we do look at those items. And this is one of those that we did spend quite a bit of time looking at. In the end, we were very satisfied with that solution that, because they'd gotten out of that area. And when we say an inundation map, that is, if that dam were to fail, what area would be covered with water? So that's what an inundation map is. And that's what determines, or helps determine, the high-hazard dam classification. So in this case, it's not a high-hazard dam. We made sure that it wasn't a high-hazard dam. And, you know, we certainly want to work with our property owners to make sure that our dams don't get into that case because it takes a lot of extra effort and time and costs. So that's why, in this case, we did those, those, those items. I'd also just like to say that there is a requirement they provide, that the developers provide a preliminary drainage analysis with these plans. And they do have to show that, they have to do a calculation using our engineering design criteria that shows what the existing runoff is prior to development, and they cannot exceed that post-development. So we make sure that the develop, that the develop state of that area will not exceed what is existing to try to help those adjacent neighborhoods. It's something we take very seriously. And then when they get to the final plat stage, they'll have to resubmit that specific area with a lot more detail and show us that, in fact, that they are meeting that requirement.
And should this, this project, should this development be approved, city staff continue to monitor if, as it's developed out, how it's impacting this area, especially with Destin Landing and all that stuff?
Well, we typically don't go out and do post-inspections. We do do post-inspections on detention ponds periodically. But we don't go back out and, and check and assess what's happened afterwards because, in effect, at a certain point, it kind of becomes private owner to private owner. So we, we wouldn't be going out and doing periodic examinations of that. But certainly, if there were concerns, we'd be willing to look into those and work with the property owners.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Is there any final comment from council based on any of that? Okay. I'll entertain a motion to adopt or reject the, let's see. The motion on the floor is to adopt the ordinance as amended on second reading, section by section. Council members, you may cast your vote.
All votes have been cast, and the motion to adopt the ordinance upon second reading as amended passes unanimously.
I'll entertain a motion to adopt or reject the ordinance as amended on final reading as a whole.
Motion.
Second.
The motion on the floor is to adopt the ordinance as amended on final reading as a whole. Council members, you may-
All votes have been cast, and the motion to adopt the ordinance upon final reading as amended passes unanimously.
Item number 26, a preliminary plat for St. James Park addition, a planned unit development generally located one-quarter mile east of Klassen Boulevard on the north side of Cedar Lane. I'll entertain a motion to approve or reject the preliminary plat.
Second.
This is a companion item to the previous item. Are there any further council questions regarding this item? Seeing none. Madam Clerk, are there any further public comments regarding this item?
We have Stephen Ellis, and Sherland Dinsel.
Any further comment, final comment from anybody in the audience about this item? Okay. And are there any final comments from council on this item? Seeing none. The motion on the floor is to, is to approve the preliminary plat. Council members, you may cast your vote.
All votes have been- To approve the preliminary plat passes unanimously.
Item 27, a preliminary plat for St. James Center, Section 2, located at the southwest corner of the intersection of Cedar Lane Road and 24th Avenue Southeast. I'll entertain a motion to approve or reject the preliminary plat. Is there a representative of the applicant to make a presentation?
Figure again on this one. This is not a rezoning. So this is, for some of the newer customers, this is just a plat, a preliminary plat. And a preliminary plat is just your consideration and approval or, or a consideration of, of a subdivision of land. Basically, a plat is a subdivision of land. And what you're looking at when you're doing these things is to make sure that we have met the subdivision regulations of the city of Norman. And basically, that is our role here, to make sure the engineers who, who do these things have, have designed it to meet your subdivision regulations. What we're talking about tonight is an item that, in fact, these are so sort of mystery or routine, they go through consent docket at, at plan commission. They're not even discussed. And so this comes to you with unanimous consent docket approval at plan commission. It is right behind the Walmart supercenter. It is just south of what you've just approved. Thank you very much for St. James Park. This is basically an area of land right behind the Walmart supercenter. It's already Zoned C2. There is no change in use, no change in zoning. This is just a preliminary plat. But part of this land will probably be used by the land to the south, the large development happening to the south, where there is a large, another supercenter happening. Part of this land will likely be utilized with that land for some drainage issues. And so we're plating it so that that can happen, so that that can be a part of that development in, in a collaboration effort. So it is a simple preliminary plat. You see it there, five lots, sort of three across the bottom, two across the top. That's the proposal tonight. I think it, you can see it in context here. It's 5.77 acres, four commercial lots, and a drainage area, which is on the southern end. No zoning change. Staff recommends approval of the preliminary plat for St. James Center, Section 2. And I'll leave it that, short and simple. So if any questions, I'm happy to answer. And the engineer is here, if you have any questions about how they subdivided it and proposed it. Thank you very much.
Opportunity for members of the public to make comments regarding this item. Remarks should be directed to council only. Madam Clerk, are there any speakers registered for this item?
Yes, we'll start with Stephen Ellis. Diana Hutzel.
Diana Hutzel, Ward 5. Back again, just because this is pretty close to our neighborhood. I'd like to add, so the development includes 19,000 square feet of commercial space and a large amount of impermeable surface from the proposed parking lot, which appears to include about 112 parking spaces. And I saw the, what appears to be detention at the south end, but my curiosity is, is how flow is on the north side of that and what impact that is that flows into Cedar Lane, that goes down into the drains that eventually end up in our, in our neighborhood. And then I also wanted to ask about traffic implications. So if we, if you look at the development, it'll add 572 vehicles per day on Cedar Lane and another 468 on 24th Avenue Southeast. The St. James Park neighborhood, which you just approved, is adding 373 new homes to include also AD units, which are not included in this. But it will increase Cedar Lane traffic by 2,286 vehicle trips per day. And then the Lynx already has 900 apartments and already feeds onto 24th Avenue. It has two separate entrances there. And most of that traffic flows through the intersection at 24th and Cedar Lane. And what I've mentioned doesn't even include the potential traffic from the Armstrong Bank Development or the proposed luxury RV park, which is further down 24th Avenue. So that intersection at 24th and Cedar Lane is already pretty hazardous during peak times. And so it is on its way to well becoming a major choke point by the time you get all the things built up. So my question that I ask, what I ask on that is, is there some timeframe that the city feels that they will need to install a traffic signal at the intersection there just to protect all of the residents and commercial traffic? Thank you.
Thank you.
Sherland Dinsel.
Ditto.
Okay. Ditto.
Speak about this item? Okay. Let's see. Would the applicant like to address some of the questions in that, or all the questions?
Yeah, I think it was just drainage, I believe, Mayor, if that's what you-
Drainage, and then, I mean, you have your traffic report. I might ask staff to speak about future traffic control or signals, but if you want to talk about the drainage and those-
Sure, happy to. And the engineer, Brayden, with Crafton Toll is here. I'll have him to discuss the drainage. This is, again, basically in line with the engineering development criteria, to the extent we are required to do that. So Brayden, go ahead.
Good evening, council. Brayden Schaefer with Crafton Toll. This development here is kind of in conjunction with the development that's occurring to the south of this. And so the, the plan for this development is that that southern lot would act as a common-area detention pond that will both serve the south lot as well as provide detention for the lot directly to the north of it. And then it will over-dertain for the remaining three lots that are to the north of that. So the outlet point of that detention pond will travel north up 24th Avenue Southeast to an inlet that's already existing there at the, at the southwest corner, where essentially all of our stormwater is going to be collected, and it will all leave in the public storm sewer.
And your traffic data, I mean, I don't know if you're the traffic one, but doesn't suggest currently signalization or anything based off this development?
I don't believe it does, Mayor. I apologize. I didn't read the traffic report on this one. So, so I don't believe it did.
I didn't-
Working with staff, and I don't see that they've suggested-
Our traffic engineer, David Beasley, is here.
Yeah, we didn't have any additional traffic requirements, but I'm not sure to the answer of when the council would come for a traffic light. I have no idea.
So Destin Landing is the, kind of the controlling development in this area, being as it was such a long-range development, it kind of established what all the intersections, how they would need to be improved over time. And from that study, we determined traffic impact fees to collect from all these developments. So the two tonight, the other ones that were referenced along, south of the Walmart and everything, have all contributed traffic impact fees towards those developments, or those improvements.
And currently, city staff is not seeing that a traffic signal or control device-
Not yet, but we're going to, we're going to keep an eye on that.
Okay, thank you, David. All right. Are there any final comments from council on this item? Seeing none. The motion on the floor is to approve the preliminary plat. Council members, you may cast your vote. Council members, you may cast your vote.
All votes have been cast and the motion to approve a preliminary plat passes unanimously.
Item 28, an ordinance rezoning property located at 5451 Hootner Drive from PUD planned unit development to I-1 Light Industrial District. I'll entertain a motion to adopt or reject the ordinance on second reading, section by section.
Motion.
Second.
Is there a representative of the applicant to make a presentation?
Good evening. Mitchell Moore with Johnson and Associates, one East Sheridan Avenue in Oklahoma City. This one's a little bit different than what you've seen tonight. We're actually taking this out of a PUD and doing a straight I-1 rezone. The existing PUD allows for industrial uses. However, the site plan associated with that PUD was for all RV lots. We've got I-1 to the north and to the south of our proposed development. And you're, uh, it's bordered by the railroad tracks to the east, so we thought the straight I-1 would be an appropriate use here. It's six industrial lots. We do have detention on site. We've got the conceptual site plan. We do not have, it's a speculative project, so we don't have users for this yet. So, that could change, but the lot sizes and shapes will stay the same. We've got an engineer here from the project and happy to answer any questions.
Are there any, thank you. Are there any council questions regarding this item? Seeing none. This is an opportunity for members of the public to make comments regarding this item. Remarks should be directed to council only. Madam Clerk, are there any speakers registered for this item?
Stephen Ellis.
Steve Ellis, Ward 4. This one's interesting because we're moving away from a PUD. And one of the things that seems like we're moving away from this PUD for is because the PUD locks us into something very particular. And I don't know whether that's appropriate in this particular kind of case, but I wonder how that interacts with the general narrative about PUDs that we've been hearing tonight, how they increase flexibility and allow for, you know, extra special situations. In, you know, since in, since there's a PUD going away tonight, what are we losing by changing this back to I-2? Or did we only change it, uh, a PUD that allowed I-2 stuff before so somebody could do something special? So, I do think, uh, it's, uh, it's been a very interesting night learning about PUDs. So, uh, you know, I'd be interested in hearing what the city staff had to say about what are we losing by moving this to I-2? An obsolescent zoning code, I suppose, uh, and away from the pub that we already adopted. Thanks.
Thank you.
Cheryl Ann Dinsel. Okay. That's all.
Okay. Any further comment from anybody in the audience about this item? Okay. The applicant, would you mind answering your process? Why you would go, not go, why you wouldn't ask for a different PUD based specifically on the project you're wanting to do? Why are you asking for just a regular rezoning instead?
Sure. So, our client envisions this as an industrial park. The previous PUD allowed for all I-1 uses. Like we said, it just locked into that very specific site plan that was all kind of RV lots. And so, um, since this is a speculative project and we don't know who our users are going to be, we can't lock into a very specific building footprint or anything like that because those things could change a little bit. However, all of those will meet all code requirements in the I-1 district.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
And would staff, anything, have anything to add about? I recall that project, I remember voting for it, and the RV park, which never happened. So, um, I think that, I could probably answer that question is that you're not trying to build an RV park. So, okay, thank you. Are there any final comments from council on this item? Okay. The motion on the floor is to approve the preliminary plat. Council members, you may cast your vote. Wait a minute. Oh, that was the wrong one. Okay, the motion on the floor is to adopt the ordinance on second reading, section by section. Council members, you may cast your vote.
All votes have been cast and the motion to adopt the ordinance on second reading passes unanimously.
I'll entertain a motion to adopt or reject the ordinance on final reading as a whole.
Motion.
Second.
The motion on the floor is to adopt the ordinance on final reading as a whole. Council members, you may cast your votes.
Adopt the ordinance upon final reading passes unanimously.
Item 29, a preliminary plat for Hootner Industrial Park, a replat of Lot 2, Block 1, Value Place Edition, generally located one-half mile south of Indian Hills Road on the east side of York Drive. I'll entertain a motion to approve or reject the preliminary plat.
Motion.
Second.
This is a companion item to the previous item. Are there any further council questions regarding this item? Seeing none. Madam Clerk, are there any further public comments regarding this item?
Stephen Ellis. Cynthia Rogers. And Cheryl Ann Dinsel.
And are there any further comments or final comments from anybody else in the audience? Are there any final comments from council? Seeing none. The motion on the floor is to approve the preliminary plat. Council members, you may cast your vote.
All votes have been cast and the motion to approve the preliminary plat passes unanimously.
Item 30, an ordinance rezoning property located at 3250 West Robinson Street from C-1 Local Commercial District to C-2 General Commercial District with special use for a bar, lounge, or tavern. I'll entertain a motion to adopt or reject the ordinance on second reading, section by section.
Motion.
Second.
Is there a representative from the, of the applicant to make a presentation?
Members, my name is Lou Greenfield. I, uh, I'm Director of Operations at Cruz and Autosport. I'm coming before you again to request a rezoning to allow special use, to allow us to apply for our ABLE license to sell beer and wine at 3250 West Robinson, not liquor. Our new location will hopefully be up and running by early January, and we'd like to be able to serve beer and wine inside our customer waiting area while they wait. Two years ago, for the same thing at our Main Street location at Main and Berry. It's been a great success, and customers are always happy when they can enjoy a beer while they're waiting on their car. We will be serving in the customer center only, not exterior or in any of wash areas. And thank you for your time. If you've got any questions, let me know.
Uh, yes, sir. I was just gonna ask you, have there been any issues with, you know?
No, we set a drink maximum at three drinks, and we have yet to have to cut anyone off yet.
Okay, so, you know, we can't go in there and just see how many beers we can drink before our car's ready?
No. We have a maximum of three.
Okay, thank you.
Councilor Gansberry.
Just for clarification, only for those that might not already know how you operate, do you allow anybody to take any to-go drinks with them?
No, we do not allow to-go drinks at all. It's, it's like any restaurant or movie theater. The signs are posted on the doors, no alcohol beyond this point.
Perfect. Okay. Okay. This is an opportunity, thank you. This is an opportunity for members of the public to make comments regarding this item. Remarks should be directed to council only. Madam Clerk, are there any speakers registered for this item?
Stephen Ellis. Cynthia Rogers. Cheryl Ann Dinsel.
Are there any final comments from anybody in the audience about this item? Are there any final comments from council about this item? The motion on the floor is to adopt the ordinance on second reading, section by section. Council members, you may cast your vote.
All votes have been cast and the motion to adopt the ordinance upon second reading passes unanimously.
I'll entertain a motion to adopt or reject the ordinance on final reading as a whole.
Motion.
Second.
The motion on the floor is to adopt the ordinance on final reading as a whole. Council members, you may cast your votes.
All votes have been cast and the motion to adopt the ordinance upon final reading passes unanimously.
Item 31, an ordinance amending sections 20-1008, license required through 20-1013 outside sales of Article 20-X Food Services and Appendix A, City of Norman Fee Schedule, to implement changes consistent with new state laws relating to the licensure, regulation, and inspection of mobile food establishments and mobile food preparation vehicles, and providing an effective date of November 1st, 2025. I'll entertain a motion to adopt or reject the ordinance on second reading, section by section.
Motion.
Second.
I will recognize Beth McCullough, Assistant City Attorney, to make a presentation.
Thank you, Mayor, and hello, council members. I'm here to talk about O-2526-10. I do have a presentation. It's in there. We're good about that. See if I can find it.
Okay.
I was here before you in a conference on, oop, I got ahead of it, on September 2nd, and we talked about this, but I did want to run through it because there's been just a little bit of a tweak. Here we go. Okay, so this all originates from House Bill 1076, and actually, one other House bill that I'll discuss as well. I see, I left off the word department, but this concerns the Oklahoma Health Department state regulations regarding, uh, food establishments, and specifically, these amendments are about food, uh, mobile food establishments. It has both mandatory provisions and brand-new provisions to address the licensure issues. But essentially, what it boils down to is what has been described as a streamlining of the process that kind of focuses a municipality's ability to license really on determining that they've complied with state requirements. And so, that is going to shift our license provisions a bit, and I wanted to talk about exactly what that looks like. So, what we have in the state law is a definition of mobile food vendor, and we're going to tie that in so that we're sure that we are acting consistently. And we already had general rules in our licensure regarding operations, but this state law does establish very specific ones that are actually in line with what we have already. They address safety issues, general nuisance behaviors, waste disposal, and of course, display of certifications and licenses and otherwise compliance with state law. Where they are allowed to operate is also specifically addressed, and that's going to be, as it always was for municipal property, and that's where we allow it. And for other private property, that's going to be as allowed by zoning, except that they are allowed to operate in residential areas under very specific parameters. And that's when they are invited by a resident or residents to serve that resident and their guests, and they are not located on that particular property more than 12 days a year. I envision this as snow cone trucks for birthday parties or something along those lines. And so, here's the definition of mobile food establishment. It's pretty similar to how we were operating. I will note that the 12-hour limit was already in our own code. I tweaked the language a bit to, again, to make sure that we're mirroring the state law. But essentially, a food truck is readily movable. That's the most important part. There are other new definitions that tie into mobile food establishment and mobile pushcart, which is manual, not vehicular. There's mobile retail food, which the difference there is prepackaged, so think ice cream truck. And mobile food vendor includes all three of those different types of establishments, as well as food vending vehicle is going to refer to the vehicles in those situations as well. So, that's how it ties together. And this bill specifically said what we can do. We can restrict noise within certain distances. We can restrict and regulate operations in public parks and require a permit for that. I am going to talk about that a little bit because we discussed on the second an idea for a park permit that we had penciled in, but since that time, we decided that it would be more efficient to add that with other amendments that are coming forward potentially for parking. And this will give the Parks Department and other staff time to implement software and other items that will kind of coincide with that. So, that's been removed, and I'll talk a bit more about that in a minute. We can also restrict, um, situations where ingress and egress are going to cause potential harm or safety issues. We can develop permits for metered parking, and that's another item that I understand will be coming back for discussion. Of course, we can investigate foodborne illness issues. We are, we are permitted to report violations of the Act to the Health Department, as well as issue citations and take other actions that are consistent with state and local laws that are consistent with this Act. And finally, we can adopt our own consistent regulations, as long as those address specific public health or safety risks. And so, here are some things that the law says that we specifically cannot do. We cannot prevent operation where they are complying with the state licensure and other state laws. And that's important because if they aren't complying with that, then we need to be ready to, um, to address that. For instance, if we have someone that shows up at a food or at a festival without a sticker indicating, uh, passing the state inspection, we are going to be able to take action on that because they have not operated in compliance with those laws. We are allowed, oh, sorry, we are not allowed to regulate the relationship between that mobile food vendor and the private property owners to which they are talking about locating on their property. That relates to location distances from other businesses, as well as the type of agreement. We can't regulate their relationship with commercial food or retail establishments. An example, obviously, the commissary. We cannot require constant motion or location changes unless they're violating the Act. We also can't require certain vehicular equipment for the food truck. We cannot limit the number of licenses. Municipalities cannot require fingerprinting, bonds that name the municipality, or additional insurance coverage where it is not on a city property or at a city event. In the situations where our interests are implicated, we can require that additional insurance coverage, and that has been added to our licensure as a part of this amendment. We cannot require several health inspections unless we are pursuing foodborne illness or other safety issues. We are allowed non-intrusive spot inspections at mass gatherings under this, so that's going to allow our personnel to get on-site and view and make sure that these situations are going to be safe. And finally, we cannot charge fees for the licenses that cover more than just the administrative cost of issuance. So, we do have some tweaks to our amounts of licenses right now that are going to make all of them kind of in line with each other, although I do understand that some of the updates to our licensure fees are a bit overdue, and we might be looking at those more globally soon as well. But that will just be separate. And this is the other House bill I mentioned. This one states that as of November 1st, food trucks are essentially subject to the state fire marshal as far as inspections. They are within their jurisdiction. So, that is going to be a change. We are trying to coordinate as well as we can to plan on what that's going to look like. But essentially, our, um, fire personnel is not going to be doing inspections, rather, they are going to be looking to ensure that they have passed their state inspection. But of course, onsite at mass gatherings, there will be non-intrusive spot inspections to also make sure that everything looks safe. We, um, may still enforce event permits, operational fees, and the obvious stuff, you know, land use, zoning. This is pretty much in line with House Bill 1076. And the last real provision is that we cannot enact a safety code that is going to be different than anything enacted on a state level unless we were within a larger county, which we are not quite to that threshold. Then again, House Bill 1076 does also say that we really can't touch anything unless it's related to fire or safety issues. And so, here is a summary of what we done. As I said, our, our regulations were really pretty much in line with the spirit, my apologies, with the spirit of what was in the state law. And so, we really just tweaked it to ensure facial consistency and compliance. So we have added an annual license, as well as the temporary that was formerly issued only for mobile food vehicle, mobile food vendors. They now have the option of doing temporary or annual. And that's going to align more with their state licenses and presumably with their fire marshal inspections. And we are recognizing the categories recognized by the state, again, for consistency. And we've added the additional insured provisions, and we, as I've said, we're going to pause the park event permit only long enough to get everything else in place so that when it rolls out, it will be able to work seamlessly. And we've written the ordinance to be effective November first with everything else. So with that, does anyone have any questions?
I did have one for you, Beth. Any, any reason you know of for the, like, what difference is it if a county has more than four hundred thousand people versus less when it comes to a regular? I know that's a legislature issue, but I just wasn't sure if you might have any insight on that.
I don't. That is certainly where it happened. I, I couldn't, I couldn't say a motivation for it, I'm sorry, no.
Seems arbitrary to me, but anyway, okay, thank you. Are there any council questions regarding this item? Seeing none. This is an opportunity for members of the public to make comments regarding this item. Remarks should be directed to council only. Madam Clerk, are there any speakers registered for this item?
Stephen Ellis.
Steve Ellis, Ward four. I just wanted to say I'm sorry y'all got preempted again. It happens way too often in the state of Oklahoma. We should be able to figure out our own considerations for our own special circumstances. So, you know, it's, it's not fun, but, you know, I'm in favor of not getting in any more trouble with the state than we have to, so pass this baby. Thanks.
Thank you.
Paul Wilson. Cynthia Rogers. And Sheryl Ann Dinsel.
I grew up in a much more populated place, and every single restaurant in the city of New York has a A, B, C, or D sign on their door or window indicating where they, they fall within the guidelines of the State Health Department. And it, I found it very interesting that in this state, we're finally getting around to really looking out after the health and safety of individuals in regards to food handling. In that, along that same line, I question the arbitrary food that's being left out for people to get sick on, on our streets. And I know there are service providers here that is supported by this council that regularly encourage people to just cook something and hand it out. To my knowledge, all food should be cooked that's been given to the public in a commercial kitchen that is regulated by the State Health Department. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other comments from the audience on this item? Seeing none. Any final comments from council on this item? Seeing none. The motion on the floor is to adopt the ordinance on second reading, section by section. Council members, you may cast your vote.
Our votes have been adopt the ordinance upon second reading passes unanimously.
I'll entertain a motion to adopt or reject the ordinance on final reading as a whole.
Motion.
Second.
The motion on the floor is to adopt the ordinance on final reading as a whole. Council members, you may cast your votes.
Our votes have been cast and the motion to adopt the ordinance upon final reading passes unanimously.
Item thirty-two, an ordinance amending section two dash three zero one to remove mention of Norman Election Commission repealing Article ten dash eleven titled Campaign Disclosures and Contributeors, Contributions, and Expenditures of the Code of the City of Norman. I'll entertain a motion to adopt or reject the ordinance on second reading, section by section. So moved.
Second.
I'll recognize Catherine Walker, Assistant City Attorney, to make a presentation.
I'd like to talk to you about another ordinance that is in response to state legislation adopted that will go into effect on November first, 2025. Years ago, there was not a lot of legislation at the state level regulating how municipalities could, could oversee local elections. That changed in 2014 with the adoption of the Municipal Campaign Finance and Financial Disclosure Act, and our role in overseeing elections really was reduced at that time. We kept the Norman Election Commission, and they received reports from candidates for office and committees and met and went over those reports, but they didn't really have any enforcement authority after the adoption of that Act. This year, with the adoption of Senate Bill eight ninety, the legislature went a step further, and now they've eliminated the clerk's role in receiving those reports. Those will all now be filed with the Ethics Commission, which will, of course, affect all of you if you run again, and any other candidate for office. It's really going to change the system quite a bit. So what we're leaving in the ordinance is the filing fee for municipal office. That's currently paid at the election board and then remitted to the city. But really, the rest of it is being repealed because it is no longer applicable with the adoption of this Act. So that impacts both Section two dash three oh one, which is where we list all of our boards and commissions, and then Article ten dash two, which really dealt with the role of the clerk and the role of the Election Commission in reviewing the reports that we received. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions. The adoption timeline for this ordinance will, will bring us into compliance with the new law in time for November first.
Thank you. Are there any council questions regarding this item? Seeing none. This is an opportunity for members of the public to make comments regarding this item. Remarks should be directed to council only. Madam Clerk, are there any speakers registered for this item?
Stephen Ellis.
Steve Ellis, Ward four. Apologies for appearing quite so often, but I knew I was going to be here anyway, so I looked at the agenda and kind of had views on a bunch of this stuff. I was wondering, I, I wasn't very clear about what the state regulation was on Norman, just keeping that information on Norman candidates ourselves. I think it would be, I, I don't think this got preempted, but I could be wrong. I didn't quite understand what the state law said. But I think it would still be a good idea if wherever things are officially stored for Norman candidates, that the Norman city webpage still have their campaign expenditure reports be available there, just because it's a clearinghouse for people who are primarily interested in, in Norman politics. And I have my complaints about the city webpage, but I've actually kind of learned how to use it, so I know where to get that stuff pretty easily. And it might help many of us who are interested in those reports to sort of chase them down more easily, rather than to go through the very clunky state website. So if, if it's at all possible, and I don't know whether that would be an amendment or something tonight, or just something to take up later, let's try to keep the Norman campaign expenditures on the website, just for transparency purposes. Thanks.
Thank you.
Oops, sorry, falling behind here. Marguerite Larson.
Marguerite Larson, Ward six. So I basically almost had the same question that Steve Ellis did. Because right now, candidates need to actually show where their funding is coming from and who is making their contributions. So I was a little confused and concerned as well about the transparency. If this transparency is going to be going away, because I have an issue with that. I think people need to know, the public needs to know, where campaign funds are coming from and who's, who's donating to each campaign. So that was my question. I just want to make sure that there's still transparency. Thank you.
Sheryl Ann Dinsel.
I would like to reiterate what the previous speakers have said. It's important for people to know who's backing whom in this city. It's also important for citizens to know exactly how money is spent. So the more opportunity we have to see in black and white where the money is going and where, how the money is coming in, and who's doing what for whom. Thank you.
Thank you. Any final comment from anybody else in the audience on this item? Okay. Any final comment from council on this item? Councilmember Grant?
Oh, yes. I was going to recognize City Clerk Brenda Hall to explain that there will be a link.
Yes, that's correct. We will not be able to have them filed here in my office any longer. They now have to file those through the Ethics Commission, and it's online that it will be done. They have a new portal coming out. I honestly think it's going to be a lot better for the candidates to be able to just plug in the numbers, and it keeps everything calculated. They will still have to provide the same data that they provide now, but it will be submitted to the Ethics Commission directly. We do plan to put a link on our website where they normally are so that you can, it'll take you to that page directly, and then you'll be able to see those reports.
Thank you. Councilmember Gansberry?
Yes, just for me personally, if anybody in Ward one ever has any problems or concerns about that, reach out to me. I will share all my financials at any time with you. I have nothing to hide there, so thank you.
Thank you. Any further comments from council? And I would agree with that same statement, and I think we all would. If you wanted to see our campaign finances, let us know. We'll be happy to share that with you. And yes, to have an expectation that that will be a link on our city website where that's at currently, and folks can just click on that, and it'll take you right to the state site where that is located, so. Not available yet, but will be. Okay.
November first, November first is when the law takes effect, so council members will file their fourth quarter report on this new portal, but you'll be getting some more information about it. I have some stuff to send out to you as well, so.
Okay. Thank you. All right, the motion on the floor is to adopt the ordinance on second reading, section by section. Council members, you may cast your vote.
The motion to adopt the ordinance upon second reading passes unanimously.
All right. I'll entertain a motion to adopt or reject the ordinance on final reading as, as a whole.
Motion.
Second.
The motion on the floor is to adopt the ordinance on final reading as a whole. Council members, you may cast your vote.
Our votes have been adopt the ordinance upon final reading passes unanimously.
Thank you. And, all right. All right, next item is miscellaneous comments. This is an opportunity for citizens to address city council. Due to the Open Meetings Act regulations, council is to pay in the discussion during miscellaneous comments. Remarks should be directed to the council as a whole and limited to four minutes or less. And who do we have?
We will start with Audra Abbott.
If you can't pull that down enough, we can try the cordless if you need to use it. Thank you very much. I'm Audra Abbott. I'm actually no longer a resident here. I lived here for about ten years previously, and my son attends OU here. My parents live here, and my brother still lives here. But I just wanted to come and speak to the mayor and all of the council members about the importance of civil dialogue and being able to speak to one another as if we are all Oklahomans. And to be able to say that sometimes if you don't have anything nice to say, maybe you should stay off social media because it's a place that kind of breeds the hateful and violent, threatening language to each other. And I am happy to see that the result of what we had with our grassroots effort, I'm thankful for all of the support within the community that has backed me because of things that were said. And I just wanted to make sure that everyone knows that we still are having an effort with that because we just can't be talking to each other in the ways that we are. You can't think that someone that disagrees with you is stupid or mentally ill or any of the other above things that you could, that you might think about them simply because they don't have the same beliefs of due. I'm a Christian, and that's where most of my values come from. So obviously, I forgave the statements before I was even asked to be forgiven of the statements because that's where my heart lies. But I want everyone in the community to know that we are still definitely pushing forward and making sure that the people that represent us represent everyone, not just the people that voted for them.
Thank you.
Stephen Ellis.
Steve Ellis, Ward four, again. Briefly to start, let's keep fighting the OTA. Solidarity is really crucial at this time. We know a lot better what is up for, for grabs right now, and I think it's seriously important. So let's, as a city, keep going. Let's all be together on that. And then sort of for the main show here, I just want to say I'm really saddened by the sudden resignation of Ward three's council member. I was deeply disappointed by the social media posts that got her into trouble. But I'm also disappointed by the nature of the pressure she has faced because what happened there was not the main problem with our problem with dialogue in Norman or the US for that matter. So let me make three points. The first is that suicide is a very serious issue, so it's harmful to refer to suicide in order to express contempt for someone. It undermines the kind of society that we want to have, which makes suicide basically a non-option for people. But secondly, in a combative context, telling someone to commit suicide is not the same as prompting or aiding into suicide. They aren't taking orders from you if you say, "Go away." So some of the concerns about Montoya's social media post, I think, were ill-grounded, and they were ill-grounded in a way that was meant to attack someone. So three, if we're serious about suicide prevention, we need to stop dehumanizing people, and that includes politicians. I understand former council member Montoya received death threats over this issue, and the elephant in the room is really the way we generally speak about each other and not just saying admittedly crude things on Facebook. The third point here is really the most important. If we want to prevent suicide, we need to stop dehumanizing people, and that's where it gets difficult. The Gospel of Matthew actually lays out the problem for us. Why do you notice the splinter in your brother's eye but do not perceive the wooden beam in your own eye? And I think all of us are guilty of that to some extent. What people seem to have forgotten is that there has been a suicide that was the direct result of a Norman city council meeting. And it wasn't because someone, either in the audience or the diocese, said, "Go commit suicide." What happened was that a young person who was attending the meeting felt so hopeless after his sexual orientation and identity were demonized, literally for hours, I was there, on the end, that he decided to end his life. So that young man's name was Zach Harrington. You can, you know, Google about that if you're not familiar with the situation. The lesson to learn from our specific context is that speaking about people The lesson to learn from our specific context is that speaking about people as though they are worthless, as though they deserve incessant attacks on them, can in fact provoke a suicide. That sort of dehumanization occurs in this chamber unfortunately regularly, sometimes from the diocese, although not so much now, and sometimes from the floor. And yeah, I'm thinking largely about our treatment of the unhoused, although I think it goes for treatment of immigrants, it goes for treatment of people who are libtards, or treatment of people who are maggots or whatever. I mean, I think we don't treat each other with a lot of respect, but it's not because we tell people essentially to go to hell on Facebook, it's because we denigrate their value to our society. And we all need to be careful about not doing that, even though we're hip-deep in it right now. So, let's pay attention to that stuff.
Lane Brown?
Good evening, council. I'm actually not from Norman, I'm just from Oklahoma, but I figured I would come down because I saw the comments that Ms. Bree made, and I really just wanted to talk to her face and tell her how big of an actual coward she was, because encouraging someone to simply put a gun in their mouth and pull the trigger is insane. And it's actually, you don't have a mental health problem, you need to seek Jesus Christ, and if any of you guys think that that was okay, then you probably need to go seek a church. And then, Mayor Holman, you were pretty quiet three months ago. Okay, sorry, sorry, sorry. Sir, you were quiet about this entire situation, and I think that just speaks to your integrity and, you know, why you shouldn't be mayor. And then, the lady that is sitting next to Ms. Bree said some vile comments on social media about Charlie Kirk's death, which is disgusting. I mean, the man went to college campuses. You would be terrified to go to a college campus and debate conservatives or even just people who are Christians, probably. You would just sit there and mind your own business and then go home. And so, Charlie Kirk was courageous, he was brave, you aren't. So, hiding behind your phone and making egregious comments on social media about his death is sickening, and if you think that this just stops with Ms. Bree being... Those are the rules of this chamber. Okay, that's fine.
Address the entire council.
Okay. So, if you guys think that this stops with Ms. Bree, it doesn't. So, if you guys wanna continue to post stuff on social media, I'll drive down here every city council meeting and do what I'm doing and tell the person that I'm not allowed to talk about is gone. And we'll find someone to run against her if that's what it takes, or she can cower down like Ms. Bree and resign. Thank you, council.
John Skamihorn? No. Okay. Paul Wilson?
Good evening, council. It's been a minute since I've been down here. I was gonna talk about the elephant in the room, but I'm not going to. But what I'm gonna do is, we need to go forward with this, learn from this, and actually give ourselves, everybody up there, a code of conduct. I looked it up. Every major city in the metro has a code of conduct for their council members, except the city of Norman. When you are on social media, whether you like it or not, you are not only representing yourself, you are representing the entire city of Norman. Most people on Facebook, on those pages, knows exactly who you are, that you are a city council member or a mayor for the city of Norman. If you cannot conduct yourselves in an ethical way, you should not be on social media. You should conduct yourselves on social media just like everybody else and yourselves have to conduct yourselves inside this building with a certain level of decorum and treat everybody with respect. I have talked to many of you from the diocese over social media, and I've had nothing but respectful dialogue. And then I saw that post, and then the other post. I had respect for every one of you, especially even the new ones that I'm not too familiar with, but those two I've lost respect for because of what they said. It was cruel. In a lot of ways, it is hate speech. It is also not right. And furthermore, do you realize if a student in Norman public schools had said what that person said, there would be grounds for at least suspension, if not expulsion? Plus, there have been people who have been told, like the lady that was told this, that have actually gone through with the suicide. Is that what it's gonna take to make you guys get a code of conduct? Have somebody die from what one of you say? How about we get a code of conduct? It's not hard. You guys can present it to council. I'm pretty sure every one of you who have morals will approve it. Stop being the only city in the metro that doesn't have one. Let's get a code of conduct for you guys. Every business has one. I'm sure if an employee came up to you and told you to go yourself, they probably wouldn't have a job very long. But at this moment, you guys can go on social media and say whatever you want, however you want, with no repercussions. It's time to end this. And on top of that, how can we tell our kids not to cyberbully when we have elected officials cyberbullying a resident of the city of Norman? We don't do as we say, not as we do. If you guys want it, say what you wanna say and mean it. I mean, that kinda speech is not appropriate whatsoever. Neither is glorifying somebody who was assassinated for his political beliefs. There's no room for that anywhere in the state of Oklahoma, anywhere in the United States. A politically motivated murder...
Thank you.
I don't see Rob Norman. Okay. Marguerite Larson?
Marguerite Larson, Ward 6. So, I think people have always, I think all of you, at some point has gotten out of hand on a Facebook post. Don't look at me like that, girlfriend. So, I am sure that that has happened to every damn one of you in this room. You become engulfed in a conversation, it becomes a heated conversation, words come out that you may not mean, that you really didn't need to say. Whatever the case may be, there has been so much hateful, so many threats going on Facebook, personal threats against Democrats. I don't see y'all doing anything about that.
Please address...
What about our... You're talking about a city council that has the prerogative...
Please, just address the council, please.
I'm sorry, what?
Just address the council.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay. You all have the prerogative, it's a freedom of speech to say what you need to say, however you wanna say it. You are an individual. This is guaranteed by the First Amendment, even though the First Amendment is being attacked by our officials. And I just think that whatever comes out, comes out. There are... I'm not real happy with all the antisemitism, which actually affects me personally, but it is what it is. People feel the way they feel, and until there's some sort of humanity, things aren't gonna change. But it's... I don't think that you guys, in my opinion, have done anything that I would be ashamed of. So, I feel like you have always acted as individuals personally and on a professional level when you are conducting the city council. So, I want to defend you guys. Thank you.
Thank you.
Diana Hutzel?
Good evening. Diana Hutzel, Ward 5. So, I have a couple of topics tonight, and one actually originates from this evening. So, I'd like for council to consider possibly changing whatever would need to be changed so that when you have a development that's going on and it involves a home or multiple homes within a neighborhood that has a designated HOA, that perhaps the notification include the official HOA, which could be determined by the address located on the property tax records, where the HOA bill goes for the property tax. So, that would be something that would really help because, quite frankly, even with 19 neighbors in my neighborhood, we don't even all talk to each other all the time necessarily, even as small as we are. So, thanks on that. And then, I just kinda wanted to... Or, tonight I listened to the regional transit plan, and I thought it was interesting. I read all the charts and everything. I'm really kinda, though, looking for a drill down of the specific implications for the costs for Norman, the potential benefits for Norman. I mean, it talked about a lot of wide-ranging, you know, 151,000 new jobs, a million-hour reduction in drive time and what have you, and I know that that is across the entire spectrum of central transit, but I'd kinda like to really know what's going on with Norman specifically, as soon as we know that. And then, the last thing I'd like to talk about tonight is about the city finance meeting that occurred Thursday, and just the... And that actually should've been my first start-up because that, to me, is the most important thing to talk about. I'd like to respectfully request that, again, that the city post all of the information on the finance meeting that you guys get for the rest of us, because quite frankly, when I'm sitting there on my computer watching and typing and everything, it's hard for me to go, "Okay, line 13 is what?" And so, since we don't have that, so I'd appreciate that. But last Thursday's finance committee meeting, you know, the city reviewed its year-end numbers for 2025 and projections for the new year. And while many council members were present, not all were, but many residents weren't at that meeting even virtually. I looked, I think there were 85 people that have actually even viewed that meeting since then. And to me, there are serious concerns. FY '25 ended with a $5.8 million deficit to the general fund, which pays for core services like road repairs, emergency 911, fire police, I mean, all of the city salaries and everything. And the city had to basically draw down from its reserves to pay for that shortfall. This year, the shortfall is projected to be $7.2 million, even higher, leaving the general fund with just $1.3 million above the mandated required reserve by next summer. Our sales tax, which is our main revenue stream, is flat and actually came in $1.8 million below estimates last year. And so, I think we're really, we're at a critical moment, and it's been talked about for several years. And unfortunately, our state is one of those, we're at the mercy of sales tax, use tax, and we don't get property tax, and quite frankly, it'll be out of the cold-dud hands of anybody in the county that'll give you any of that money, so we have to live with what we have. So, I'd really request that we really attempt to grow our sales tax base, you know, that we... Because if we don't, we're gonna have to spend within our means, which means we'll have to take significant cuts, which is gonna be really challenging because we're already under... You guys are understaffed, the city needs services, nobody wants to see, you know, cuts to services. And so, I don't think you've made the decision yet, but I would implore you to work with the Cleveland County Economic Development Committee and other like organizations to try and bring new jobs to Norman and tax journeying businesses to Norman, and then reach out to other municipalities who have successfully gone through situations like we've gone through and find out what their lessons learned were. And so, my key thing, though, is please don't wait thinking that the situation is gonna go away because it's not, based upon the trend of sales tax revenue and everything in our state. So, I hope you'll discuss this openly, and the community will be invited to, and to the participation, because these decisions help all of us and affect all of us. Thank you.
Thank you.
Joseph Love?
Joseph Love, Ward 1. I'll keep this brief. You know, to echo what some of the other folks were talking about here tonight, you know, we are a community, and we look to certain people as our community leaders, particularly those in our schools and at the college. We have roughly about 300 members that were part of Charlie Kirk's organization that were very, very distraught at what had the events that's taken place over the last couple of weeks. And, you know, some of the things that were said regarding that particular event were very disheartening to many of the youth in our community, particularly. My own daughter and my own son took it very, very hard. Not what was said there, but the general, what happened, and just how some of the community tolerated certain behavior. So, the one thing that I really wanna say, just is, the city apparently addressed this issue, and I don't know if it came from the city council or if it was someone else that wrote it. It just says, "The city of Norman..." It was listed on the city's webpage under news. "The city of Norman, as a municipal corporation, does not support actions or behaviors that encourage harm." That was the most relevant part of the news story that was there. And I just want to implore you guys to know that that's not enough. I think silence is taken as acceptance by some people. We've actually had a killing that's happened in the last couple of weeks because somebody thought that was the right thing to do. We've had people speak tonight that seem to think calls for suicide are okay. And I just think we need to be clear about the message that we're giving, what's okay and what's not. And, you know, I'm not looking at... I'm not looking at saying we remove somebody or we kick somebody off, but we wanna say that we wanna hold our council, our leadership, to a higher standard, just to a standard of one that is safe and healthy for our community. With that, I'll give it to the next person.
Thank you.
Cynthia Rogers?
Good evening. Cynthia Rogers, Ward 4. Finally accepted the invitation. There's a lot to say. First, I just wanna thank all of you for serving and for all the grief you get because you can't make everybody happy all the time. I also wanna express my commitment to free speech. Not that we should be threatening people, but you as council people are also individuals, and like me at the university, I'm entitled to my opinions about things. I don't always speak on behalf of my employer. In fact, most of the times, I'm not speaking on behalf of my employer. And I think that's something we have to hold precious as we are careful about our words. I think it's unfortunate that one incident, you know, probably two minutes' worth of Facebook posts gave rise to what we are seeing tonight and losing what I think is one of the smartest council people, no offense to you guys, but she really knew the financial numbers, so I think that's a loss for council in that respect. Also, I wanted to reiterate that we need to talk about the budget. Also, in case you didn't make the TIF meeting, there's apparently $4 million sitting in that fund that we can't spend even though we really need it because we tied it up with a TIF that didn't really work out the way it was supposed to. I'm not gonna say I told you so, but I am gonna say I told you so because I did tell you so, and you can go back and look in 2006 when I predicted exactly that would happen with a sales tax TIF for retail. I wasn't the only one. Also, I would like to say, the talk about PUDs tonight was very interesting because on the one hand, well, we're using PUDs because our zoning is behind, but we're also not using those PUDs to address the stormwater problems. At a meeting I went to, I don't know, I go to a lot of meetings, they were talking about how as we develop more, we're gonna get more and more into the fringe areas, and as we're putting more of this just same... We just keep doing the same thing over and over and over. These, you know, little single-family homes or big single-family homes that create a lot of runoff, that create a lot of problems for existing infrastructure in the town. And we haven't caught up with that. I know the Raft Ellis study is coming out soon, which will tell us a lot about finances. One of the reasons we can't keep up that are expenditures... One of the reasons we can't keep up, that our expenditures rise faster than our revenues, partly it's our sales tax base, but partly it's because growth does not pay for itself in this town. We've known that for a long time. So we add more infrastructure, more stuff we have to maintain, more roads we have to build, and that puts, that damages our ability to keep up. So I hope we can think about those things, and again, I appreciate all of you, and let's just all try to be kind. Thank you.
Thank you.
Rachel, Rachel Burkey, I'm sorry. Naomi Wendler.
Hello, excuse me, Naomi Wendler, Ward two. Okay, so I have several things that were in the monthly report that was on consent tonight. Page thirteen, sales tax, we're down 469,513 from our budget number. General fund revenue is down 2,757,540, and then our expenses are up by 1,528,610. So, now I understand, you know, we can't control the sales tax or revenues generally, but we spent an extra $1.5 million in, I guess that was August. So what's that about? You know, what, yeah, what was it for? Why was it not in the budget? Next thing, on page eighteen, there's this little yellow chunk about building permits and licenses. So this is like planning department stuff, and there's a note saying that the new system went in, it was installed in November 2023, and they haven't figured out how to get those numbers from the new system into this report. It's been almost two years. What's the holdup with that? Page twenty-three, the traffic counter is broken for, like, the drive-up utility bills, I guess the Dropbox, and then the drive-up thing. How much would it cost to fix that, or get a new one, so that we could have, you know, those numbers reflected in the report individually versus, well, it says it's broken, so that's kind of silly. So the PUD thing, I also found that interesting. So I looked more into the zoning policies of the city that I went to for vacation this summer, and they maintain the origin zoning for each, what would be a PUD or a SPUD. So if it was originally an R1, then they would say it's R1-dash number, and in that dash number, there would be, they list that specifically in their zoning, this, you know, these are all of the amendments to the normal R1, and then another one would be R1-dash two, and so that would be the next, the second one that was modified from the base zoning. So I don't know if that's any better or worse than PUD or SPUD, but when you look at the map and you see a PUD or a SPUD, I don't know what that means. What was that originally? You know, was it an R1, was it an A1, or whatever, or A2, or whatever the zone numbers are? I don't know, I just feel like transparency, I know we can look these things up, but how easy is it to look those things up? Because we'd have to, like, go through all the meeting minutes, right? Unless there's another way. Let's see, I have twenty-five seconds left. Okay. The internet is full of trolls, and mental health is important. That's it. Thanks.
Thank you.
Robin Strater.
My name is Robin Strater. I'm a resident of Ward five. First off, I want to, with Paul, he was saying that we needed a code of conduct, or a code, actually Norman does, we have a code of ethics that council needs to follow. I would suggest that all the council members go and find those code of ethics and read them, and use them. In one of the sections, Section B duties, members of the council shall conduct themselves so as to bring credit upon the city, setting an example of good ethical conduct for all citizens of the community. Doesn't say you're Democratic supporters, doesn't say you're Republican supporters, it says for everyone in the community. And I, for one, am going to be watching, and I'm gonna hold you to those ethics. Norman has an ethics committee. I have no problem going to that committee and holding each and every one of you responsible for every citizen in Norman, not just your ward, or your ward, or your ward. Every citizen of Norman will be watching you. After what happened this last week, they're all ready. They're gonna be watching every little thing you do. You need to stop and think about anything and everything that you say. If you can't say something that brings a community together, then don't say it. Norman needs to be brought together as a whole and stop with the division. Go read your code of ethics.
Thank you.
Zach Butler. Jeanette Coker.
Jeanette Coker, Ward four. Some of you may be wondering, what's all the fuss about? People get shot every day. Well, I am feeling both hurt, sad, outraged, so many things. My city council has had two people on it that have used words that are inappropriate for someone who has been elected to represent citizens in their ward. One councilperson got mad and was very vile in her responses. I can understand how this happens. I am not excusing it, but I too have said things that were inexcusably inappropriate. We also have a council member who posted vile remarks in a public forum. She expressed opinions that were inappropriate and absurdly untimely. I think this likely was done out of ignorance of the subject. My suggestion or request is that my Ward four councilperson watch all of the memorial service for Charlie Kirk. Then, at least, and that, I would suggest that for all of you, at least you would understand why I am so angry when you call him grotesque, a cog in the death machine who was popped, a grifting narcissist who spewed hate, a replaceable footnote. Have enough integrity to educate yourself, so that you have an understanding why a lot of people in that ward that you supposedly represent want you to retire.
Thank you.
Bill Trachas. Chelsea Gravel.
Hello, council. Chelsea Gravel, Ward four. It's been a minute, quite a minute, since I've had to see you. I think we all agree that we want a good place to live, that we want a good Norman, that we want a good place to have families and friends, and we want an educated environment to all spend our time. We don't want to be represented by people that bring shame and dishonor on our community. We are now known for this across our entire nation. This is something that is being spoken about as an absolute disgrace to one of our own, regardless of who it is. Every life matters. We are all important, and none of us should ever be spoken to in this manner. But right now, in our community, in our state, in our country, we all disagree. We all cannot see eye to eye. Yes, I do disagree and think that someone should not be on the far extreme of their political view and be on council. You should be in the middle. You should be able to represent every single one of the people. We should not know where you stand on different topics. You can be held accountable for what you say online. Those words are in public forever. This, I am so humiliated by my community for this. I'm humiliated that this has gone on far long enough. I'm humiliated that a council member was sitting on the dais that had an issue, and regardless if that personal issue was brought into this, in the middle of the day, she addressed a citizen in here with words that maybe some of us have muttered, but did we text them out? Probably at one point. Did we erase them, because nobody should tell somebody to do these things? Yeah, we don't send things like that. That is how we've ended up in a community, in a government system that we are now in, because you think that a far-extreme Republican and a far-extreme liberal Democrat cannot see eye to eye, but what they do see eye to eye on is that they want a loving community to be themselves and to accept others, and this was not accepting of one point of view. What was this over? The number of people that showed up to a protest. Montoya, or, hold on. A, the argument was between two individuals on Facebook. They were arguing over if thousands of people showed up to a protest, that in the photographs, there was maybe a hundred people, not even, fourteen people were in the photographs. That's what they were arguing about. This was the first thing that Montoya said. This was the first thing that was stated to the person that was already actively talking on a thread, God, we are talking about Facebook at a council meeting. This is, this is the most ridiculous thing. I would actually ask that all of you would just watch a more council meeting. They don't go on and on trying to become famous, they don't chit-chat and talk, they bring up a comment, they vote, they move on, because you are no more important than any of us. But we have chosen to put our faith in your hands for you to represent all of us, all of you, not just my council member, but all of you. And it doesn't matter that one of the council members, or two of them, or all of you say something disgraceful. We've had other council members that are not here tonight say extremely unappealing and disgusting things to citizens. You're here to represent me, to represent a normal citizen in the government. I actually have a voice, because I can come here and talk to you, I can send an email, I can have a meeting, and any of you would be happy to hear from me, or not happy, but you would listen. But not like this. This is wrong, like dirty wrong, and to not have a statement or an apology to citizens...
Carlinda Gravel.
1.5 million views on X. And you know what they're saying? They're not talking about the two council members, they're talking about Norman. Did you know that? People on camera, people in the audience, they're talking about Norman. Don't go to Norman, this is what their council members represent. This is what they're saying about a political person, a political party, a political view. Don't go to Norman, and we're losing momentum over there. So I don't know who's responsible for trying to help save us on social media, because it's not looking good at all. And what looks worse is that, you all know me from the very beginning, because I have been chased around by Facebook, by two of you. Two of you, one of you got in your car, ran down to the park, took a picture to discredit my picture, and immediately posted on Facebook, just to discredit what I was saying, just to discredit what I was saying. Two of you committed libel against me, had an attorney reach out. I said, no, I'm not interested in suing, I want things better in my city, not worse. I don't know. But this thing, so I saw this thing on June 18th. I wasn't here in Norman, I was on a trip. And I saw it, and I went, this can't be true. This isn't true. So I went to the ward pages, where they were posted on private ward pages, and then I went to the original thread, the original comment thread, thousand comments, went through them, and I went, what? This was the first time Montoya even intercepted herself in the comment thread. That was all she said, was what you saw. There was no more before, no more after. That was it. But it was enough. So what did I do? I didn't know what to do. Did I want to blast this? No. I reached out to you, and you all know that every head of this department in this city, and every single one of you, on June 19th, at 11:00 in the morning, received an email from me, Carlinda Gravel, telling you and giving you a screenshot of that. And by 6:06 PM that evening, the comments had been fully removed. Hidden? Gone forever? No. But hidden. And nobody said anything to us, and nobody would verify it, and I asked for you to. I said, someone reach back out to me, what are we supposed to do about this? But you didn't. You hid it, and you tried to keep it hidden, until another council member said what she said. I have 1 minute 17 seconds, it's not enough. We have a code of ethics that we follow here in the city of Norman. We tried to make it into a book, we have a draft, it was never published. We have a code of ethics. This is against our code of ethics. We can reach out and file an ethics violation with the state, okay? As citizens, we have the opportunity. We can file an ethics violation, of any violation. We'll post what the ethics are for city council members of the city of Norman, there are a code of ethics. There is a place to file an ethics violation. Comments being removed is actually an open records violation. We can actually submit that to our Attorney General, Drummond, because, and he could either look into that. Putting a gun in your mouth and pulling a trigger is not protected speech. That's not, that's not speech that's protected. That is incitement speech, that is putting a vein, that is all stirring someone to incite violence or to encourage violence. That is not protected speech, that is a violation. So we'll put together and we'll post how to file a ethics violation and report to Drummond. Thank you.
Cheryl Ann Dento.
Cheryl Ann Dento, properties in Ward four and six. And I would just like to remind council, like I have before, that Norman is always watching. We're a community of smart people, right? IP addresses are just like DNA. It will track your ass down. And if you think you're gonna get by with something, I got news for you. So watch your Ps and Qs, folks. And we're tired of the clown show.
Are there any final comment from anybody in the audience who has not spoken a miscellaneous comment?
Janet Heikala, Ward three. This is the first I've ever spoken from this podium, but I feel at home here. I've watched many of you grow up behind that dais, and I've watched you mature over the years. And I've, I've watched you mature over the years. And I want to say tonight that you listened. I didn't see any eye rolling. I didn't see any sneering. And I appreciate that. I have seen this room when people were not listened to. And therefore, they came back and spoke again, and spoke again, and spoke again because they weren't listened to. And I appreciate the growth that has taken place in this, behind this dais. And I want to encourage you all to continue to listen, to respect. I like the ideas about leaving your political beliefs outside these doors. Yes, you're an individual, but you also have ethics. When I was a teacher, I couldn't get online and talk hoochicoo, you know, or whatever. I had to be professional inside and outside because that's the role I took on. I encourage you all to watch your, uh, drinking prior to the meetings. And come in here sober minded when you come to this podium, when you come to the dais. And make these decisions based on skills, based on research. Not on an agenda, but what is best for Norman. I appreciate the audience not clapping because that has turned off so many people from being able to participate and intimidated people of various persuasions. And I appreciate the growth in the room that I saw tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comment from anybody that has not spoken yet?
Kevin Frank, Ward three. I'd like to say positive. I'm glad to see that the Don't Blow It initiative is working. I hope people are picking up their grass, their clippings, and helping the storm water. What I would suggest to council and the mayor, that this be taken a step further. Because I don't think it's just the residents that we need to be watching. I think it's the commercial lawn care folks that are doing not only residential, but commercial properties. Because that's where, when you drive down the streets, you see them just like I did on the way here down Robinson Street, blowing everything out in the street. No one's probably looking into it, I'm assuming, and I would implore you to do that. I'd say to put some regulations in place so that they can be watched and they can be taken care of and make sure that they are going to respect what you're asking the residents to do. On a final note, I will say, and I agree with everybody that's been saying tonight, is there is a code of ethics, and I'd like to see everybody take that very serious. Because when you're elected, there's a responsibility that comes along with it. And that responsibility means you have certain things you have to think of. And I'd implore you all not to make the repugnant remarks that I've seen. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay. Please, come forward if you, if anybody who has not spoken yet.
My name is Bill Trakis, Ward five. I'd like to, um, as a veteran of the United States Navy, I took an oath. And that oath, I have not ever been relieved of. And I just want to point out that I find it very disrespectful that any elected individual that sits on this council and refuses to face, stand in face and give the pledge of allegiance to the United States of America and to the flag for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all, don't deserve to be on this council. I also want to point out that I came here to address the ill remarks of a certain city council member. And there's been others here that have addressed it more adequately than I could. And that I personally hold you responsible, Mr. Mayor, as the chief executive over the council, that you have not publicly came out and been vocal against these remarks. You were elected. You represent Ward five, not just a city council member for Ward five. You represent all wards, all the, all the people in Norman. And you sitting there and not making any public remarks tells me that you don't care. That's all I've got to say.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Teresa Borm, Ward four. And what I want to say is that I totally agree that you're representing everybody within your wards. When I ran, I knocked on everybody's door. I didn't just knock on the party, the people that I believe belonged in my party. I knocked on everybody's door because I was going to represent everybody. That's your job. It is not your job to represent only the people who believe what you believe. Somehow, you've got to find a middle ground. And we've been told for years now that speech is violence. And now, we're being told, but it's just freedom of speech. You can say things like this as long as you belong to my party. It's not okay. I don't believe speech is violence, but I also don't believe that you should be encouraging people to hurt themselves. And you certainly don't need to be celebrating the death of an individual. I don't care if you believe what they believe, you condemn what they believe. It doesn't matter. It's not up to you to pledge judge, jury, and executioner. It's not up to you to decide the fate of somebody else that, that just because you don't believe in what they believe in, that they should die. So you can't go from one extreme to the other. You can't go saying that speech is violence and then suddenly it's not as long as what I'm saying is, you know, against the person that I don't agree with them. So please, from what I understand, there is a code of ethics for the city of Norman employees, but you guys are not subject to it. I agree with the gentleman that said earlier that you guys need to have a code of ethics that you have to, you know, abide by. Because you do represent every single person in your ward and in this city, not just the people who think like you, not just the people of your party affiliation. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, seeing no further comments from anyone? Are there any final comments from council members?
Is ready. Okay, I want to acknowledge Councilmember Montoya's resignation. It is for the best that she is taking time to work on herself and hasn't apologized. However, Councilmember Montoya's choice of words in a news comment section with a Tulsa resident were disingenuously conflated with my conversation with a Norman Ward four resident. These conversations happened three months apart. I have never called for self-harm. And my public record shows quite the opposite. When Next Benedict, a public school student in Owasso, took his life, it sent waves of grief and outrage globally. In Norman, I was the council member who hosted a memorial in Andrews Park that gave a platform to queer and trans OU students from Owasso to speak about their lived experiences in that public school district. And I'm the only council member to have marched with OU students when they held their own Next Benedict memorial. I have dressed in the past the legacy in documentary about Zach Harrington, who in 2010 took his life after a very disgraceful council, uh, meeting where former council members and the audience alike made disparaging comments about the LGBTQ plus community. I have regularly mentioned mental health resources in my council announcements, and I have done the work in my private life to, of supporting suicidal people getting admitted into hospitals. And just this past spring, I talked from this very dais about the fourteen person group chat that worked very hard to get a friend struggling with alcoholism and mental health into a hospital and into rehab. I can't speak for other council members and their relationships to each other, but more than one council member, past and present, in a time of crisis has reached out to me, and I've offered sympathy, support, and resources, like how best to connect to therapy and what types of services, like telehealth, make that more accessible. When I tell people to get therapy, it's not an oh bless your heart. It is a serious recommendation made without condescension because I know talking to trained professionals makes a world of difference in someone's quality of life and potential longevity. Maintaining one's mental health will aid in emotional regulation, allow a person to grow past painful and self-sabotaging tendencies, and find meaningful success in their professional and personal lives. And if you did not know before now, you cannot claim ignorance any longer, Title twenty-one Crimes and Punishments, State Statute twenty-one dash eleven seventy-six, use of electronic communication device to threaten, intimidate, or harass a peace officer, public official, medical provider, or crime victim. Whoever with the intent to threaten, intimidate, or harass, or facilitate another to threaten, intimidate, or harass, uses an electronic communication device knowingly to publish or post otherwise, make publicly available personal identifiable, identifiable information of a peace officer, public official, election official, medical care provider, or crime victim, and as a result places that peace officer, public official, election official, medical care provider, or a crime victim in a reasonable fear of death or serious bodily injury, shall upon conviction be guilty of a misdemeanor punishable by imprisonment in the county jail for a term not to exceed six months, or by fine not to exceed one thousand dollars, or by both. Such fine and imprisonment. Upon conviction for a second or subsequent violation, the person shall be punished by imprisonment in the county jail for a term not to exceed one year, and by fine not to exceed two thousand dollars, or by both, such fine and imprisonment. Of note, personally identifiable information means information which can identify an individual, including but not limited to, name, birth date, place of birth, mother's maiden name, biometric records, social security number, official state or government-issued driver's license, or identification number, government passport number, employer or taxpayer identification number, or any information that is linked or linkable to an individual such as medical, educational, financial, or employment information. Thank you.
This is embarrassing.
What about your comment? Please, we are past miscellaneous comment for the public. We are doing final council announcements. What comments, Councilmember Gansway? This is part of miscellaneous comment, council, final comments. Councilor Gansway?
All right, first and foremost, I think, as I'd want everybody to do in Ward one, hopefully, and the rest of Norman night. And the thing is, the de-escalation is strict of the health system. And I always tell my guys and gals, our nurses there, when we're dealing with a high-stress situation is, one, let's all take a breath. Let's just breathe in and breathe out. And right now, I'm going to say my personal feelings. No attachment to others on the panel and their opinions. I promised when I ran for this seat that I was always tell my truth as I know it, and my feelings as I know them because I think that's the right thing for the people that trusted me with their vote. So we can discuss it, you can call me, we can contact me. I'll be more than glad to sit down with anybody after I talk about this and everything. But as I hope that we've all realized by now, mental health is a big topic for me personally, okay? And one, I would like to thank the speaker that spoke. And thank you for being here tonight, being able to help start the conversations that needed to be had. But more than like, you know, that, I'm just glad that you did not act upon them. Because we'd be having a whole different conversation if that would have been the case. And so it is serious when just saying stuff can affect somebody. I deal with people every day that are there because somebody said something to them that pushed them to that point. But at the same time that we're asking, and Lord forbid with my seat, we all know what ethics is, you know, and everything, um, with our ethics violation of the last person, but I'm more than ready to sign up for an ethics conduct code and after, and already have to follow one every day of my life with all my other stuff that I do. So it's no problem there. But I think that also assistance of Norman and to really develop, and the thing that I've always loved about Norman, and the things I've always taught my adopted boys about Norman that I love more than anything, the reason why I serve, is because I truly believe in what I call the Norman way. The Norman way is that guy down the street giving free haircuts. That's the Norman way, you know? Us being able to have a conversation tonight is part of the Norman way. But all of us in this room, like some even mentioned, you know, we all have said things here, there, different contexts, different this or that, you know, that we may or may not have regretted later on. But I think as, not just council, but as a society in Norman, we can just do better with the rhetoric that we're all saying and doing on our social media posts and everything like that, and try to come together as a community in that aspect to show our kids how to use social media, to show our schools the importance. Also, when we mess up and have a failure, be able to honestly talk about it and say, this is why you don't do this. It could have repercussions over here. So I just ask that as a city, we just kind of remember what we really try to vision ourselves as the Norman way. We're a town of growth. We are the town of character. Like every town in character, you're gonna have a couple here, there that, you know, you don't like that day, but that's what I call family, you know? And for the gentleman that's not from the town and everything like that, I take real offense to the way he talked to my CEO over here and everything. He's the whole reason why I ran. I mean, the guy, to me, is Mr. Norman. And this is a learning process for all of us, you know, and everything. But the dude leads us in a great direction.
Please leave your message for him.
And has a lot of things to help our community with and all that stuff like that also. So I just say, let's all, all take a breath tonight, be glad you was here. I hope everybody comes out for regular agenda meeting moments because it was nice seeing people in the audience tonight. But let's all just take a moment. Thanks.
Yeah, thanks everybody for coming out tonight. Those of you that had the courage to come up and, uh, tell us what you thought, either way, one way or the other, um, I know it's not easy. Uh, did see some fresh faces tonight, that's always fun. Reg- regarding the resignation tonight, I, I think that's, is the right thing to do for the city of Norman. Um, it, it couldn't have been easy, uh, for her to make that decision. Um, but we have to, we have to move on in a positive way. We have to heal up from, uh, the wounds that were caused by that. You know, when the speaker's mentioned, you know, we have to stop dehu- dehumanizing each other. Uh, that's spot on. You know, if, if you disagree with somebody and, and you just keep, if, if everybody that disagrees with you is a fascist, or a bigot, or a racist, and you say it loud enough and long enough, well, someone's just gonna see that person. Well, that's not a, that's not a person. That, that's, that's a bigot. It's, it's not a father, it's not a son, it's not a daughter, it's not a mother, it's not a friend, it's not a neighbor. You've essentially dehumanized them like the other speaker mentioned earlier. Um, we have to stop that, we have to move forward. We should be an inclusive community. And this dais is a hundred percent should be inclusive. Just, there's just no room in Norman for people that want to advocate harm, uh, either self-harm or, um, harm by other people to others. It's just, there, that's not welcome in the city of Norman. It, it just isn't, it can't be. And I hope we can kind of take everything we've heard tonight, put, let, let's heal up. Let's be positive going forward. And I, I don't care. I, I help people out with issues in other wards, um, it doesn't bother me. I mean, I represent everyone. I mean, I represent everyone, everyone. I don't care if you were a Max donor to an opponent, it, it just doesn't matter. These are nonpartisan seats, and I take that very, very serious. And I think a lot of the other council members up here do too. These are 100% nonpartisan seats. The, the cliche is potholes don't care if a Republican or Democrat fixes them, they just want to get fixed. And that's the, and I think we, we do ourselves a huge disservice whenever we bring national politics into city issues. It's just, there's, there's no place for that in city politics. It causes nothing but problems. And I hope we can all stick to that going forward. Do my best, and if I'm not, please call me out. Please call me out quickly. And that's it for me, thank you.
Is many of, just a lot of what my colleagues have said, what many of you have said tonight about the current state of discourse in the United States, globally if you will. The term, I think Councilwoman Dixon referring to is othering. Looking at everybody else as something other than a human being. And it's easy to dehumanize someone if you don't, if you just think of them as another. It's easy to say hurtful things to them if that's the way you look at them. And recently, after the Charlie Kirk assassination, I did speak out and commented about the discourse in our country and the hateful rhetoric that comes from the top levels of leadership in this country. And how that affects all of us, and what that's done to us, and the fact that there are people out there who stand to benefit from our division. They see it as an opportunity to seize on and gain followers on YouTube or social media. There are people who stand to make money, millions of dollars, off of our division and are fighting with each other. They want this because they can see what it does to us, that it separates us, that it makes us not care about our neighbors. It can make us not care about loved ones, our family members, because we have this deep divide that is a wedge that has been intentionally driven between us. And I can't sit up here and say that this is easy. I've been mayor for three months. I'm being asked to police the behavior, the speech of a council member that was done before I was mayor. In our form of government, the mayor is not the chief executive of the city. The mayor is not the boss of these council members. They do not answer to me, or any mayor. They answer to the voters and the residents of their wards. I have no ability to call for or demand any of their resignations. I have no authority to chastise them or call them out on this dais by name. It would be improper of me to do so based on our code of conduct and our city charter. In my 12 years serving on the council, I've served with several council members who have done very questionable actions in their personal life and who have made very disparaging and hateful comments towards the public from this dais and on social media. And what I've experienced in Norman is that the voters have always held them accountable. Council members who have acted that way or spoken that way have resigned, or they've lost reelection at the next opportunity. And I know that's not what some of you want to hear, that that's your options, but that is it. If there are things that these council members say, that I say, that any of us say or do, that does not meet the standards of this community, then we can all be held accountable at the ballot box. And four council seats are up for election every February, that's half the council. We have provisions in our city charter that allow for recalls. If that is an action the public thinks is deserving and necessary, that is available. You can also hold us accountable here, like you've done tonight in this chamber. I've mentioned it many times before, that local government and city hall is the only form of government that has this public podium. The state Capitol and in Washington DC, they do not care what you all think. They don't care what we think. They have their own agendas, they have their own special interests, and this right here is the only opportunity. That's what I love about local government, is that podium allows you all to come up here and tell us what you think. And your elected body has to face you while you do it. And so for me, there's a lot I could say, but what's most important to me in this instance is listening to the public, to the residents of Norman. Not just those who elected me, but everybody, everybody that gets up at this podium and speaks matters to me. And I do appreciate all of you that got up and spoke and shared your story and your opinion and your expectations for this community. And so we have a lot of things, we have a lot of challenges in this city. We're not a small town and we're not a big city. You all know the challenges that we're facing, there were mentioned, several of them were mentioned tonight. We have a lot of work to do, and I promise you that the nine of us on this council cannot do it alone. We do not have all the answers. And we need the public of Norman to come together if we're going to have any hope of moving forward, moving this community forward and addressing adequately those issues that we're facing. So again, I do appreciate you all being here. I encourage you all to come back to our next council meeting and sit through the zoning changes and all the regular business that we normally deal with that people don't generally find very interesting. But you are always welcome in this city hall, you are always welcome in Norman, and that is a standard that we have to set. Even if we don't agree with you, if you don't agree with us, we are here to listen. And, and I want to encourage you all to continue being active. And absolutely, just further iterate the comments of Councilwoman Gansberry, that we have to set a standard. We have to lead by example. Because if we don't, if elected leaders, us, the governor, the president, everybody does not lead by example, then why should anybody else? Why should anybody else if the elected leaders aren't? So anyway, please, everybody, like has been said, before you hit that post button, read what you're saying, think about it, and remember that there's very likely a real person on the other side of that who has all sorts of things in their life that you don't know about and struggles that they're dealing with. And I just want to encourage everybody to have grace and understanding of each other. And with that, I will adjourn this meeting. Thank you.